All right, it is seven o'clock, so we'll go ahead and I'd like to call them. July fourteenth, twenty twenty, special well, School Board Electronic Meeting of the Falls Church City School Board to order, and I'd like to start with the call the role Ms. Goodell.
Yes, Dr. Anderson.
Here.
Dr. Dimick.
Here.
Ms. Downs.
Here.
Ms. Litten.
Here.
Mr. Reitinger.
Here.
Ms. Russell.
Here.
And Mr. Webb.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Will you all please rise and join me for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One nation.
Thank you very much. And with that, I would seek a motion regarding the agenda. Ms. Russell.
I'm. Chair Anderson, I move that I make wanted to make a motion to the move the board. I meant tonight's agenda to add a new item. Seven point oh two school reopening plan following items seven point oh one and before the item V S B A media honor roll with the remaining items as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Litten and Ms. Goodell, will you call the role?
Dr. Anderson.
Yes.
Dr. Dimick.
Yes.
Ms. Downs.
Yes.
Ms. Litten.
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger.
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Ms. Russell.
Yes.
And Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much with that. That change, the agenda is adopted. So now we'll move to public comments and two point oh one. While the state of emergency remains in effect due to COVID nineteen, written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to members. Public comments will be read into the record for a period of thirty minutes or until all submitted comments are read, whichever comes first. And in accordance with school board policy B D D H, the time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Please send written comments to School Board Clerk Marty Goodell at Goodell M at F C C P S dot org. And we'd like to note that public comments received by ten A M on the day of the meeting will be posted on board docs prior to the meeting. And with that, Ms. Goodell.
Yes, so we have twenty-two comments for tonight. The first was from Stephanie Oppenheimer. And she writes, Dear Dr. Noonan and members of the school board, we are distressed to see that tonight's agenda, and this was dated on June thirtieth, includes two items, the renaming of the high school listed as a discussion and the reopening of their schools in the fall listed as information. While we think that the discussions about George Mason and Thomas Jefferson are certainly important and warranted, we would ask that the reopening of our schools be given priority as well, and we would ask that it be a comprehensive discussion rather than merely an informational update. Right now, given the pandemic and the serious academic and social emotional mental health issues that are resulting from our school's closure and our kids inability to gather with friends and classmates, we are flabbergasted that the school board is not being given the opportunity to have a robust and thoughtful discussion about the reopening plan. We've all read the plan. Now let's talk about it. Stephanie Oppenheimer and Kathy Costa. The next is from Sonia Ruiz Bolaños, and she wrote on the support of school name changes. We would like to add our names in support of changing the names of the schools, Thomas Jefferson Elementary School and George Mason High School. To be brief, all the reasons others have stated are the reason we support this change. We are in a critical moment in history, and as the little city, we have a unique opportunity with the new construction to align ourselves with our higher ideals and walk our talk about a caring community that is welcoming to all. Thank you for your hard work and consideration. And she also wrote about reopening of schools. As most parents in the city, we move here for the school, we moved here for the schools. We have since loved every minute of it, and so have our daughters. We are writing because we are choosing to do the one hundred percent online option as schools begin because we have pre-existing conditions. We have an infant and we have to be in close contact with our elderly parents. We understand this decision is very individual to each family, child, and feel that during a pandemic that is causing unprecedented harm and deaths in our lifetime, the only thing we should do, all do, is be supportive of each other. Anything less would be far from the spirit that we are so proudly feel in Falls Church City. As a parent, given the lack of evidence, having done my PhD at Hopkins in public health surrounding COVID nineteen, I cannot in good conscience expose our infant and have him begin his life with unknown organ damage or failure or death. It is a risk we are unwilling to to take, given what is little is known about the devastation it has already caused in families. Two of our family members in Ecuador passed away due to COVID nineteen, both in their fifties, in our current reality for a family. As a former healthcare hospital management at Johns Hopkins, I am keenly aware of the attention to detail that is needed to implement safety procedures to reduce contamination and the behaviors required to maintain risk mitigation in place, all of which is extremely difficult in a hospital setting and will present plenty of challenges in a school setting, to put it lightly. The infinite jigsaw puzzle required to fit together perfectly is daunting. P P E disinfecting supplies, temperature checks, superb ventilation, staffing, et cetera. Never in a million years did I imagine I would have to consider all those lessons in the context of my children's schooling, but here we are in twenty twenty. We write this because we as as we applaud the Herculean efforts that have been made by the school administration to think through reopening school, we need our risk to be minimal for a while. We are grateful we have a choice and hope this is the case as the months pass since this pandemic is here to stay and evidence vaccine is slow to develop. From what we have read, it seems teachers in our districts were not given a choice to teach in person or online. In the reopening plan, it was clear teachers would need to use F M L A if they did not show up in person. If this indeed as it is written, then this could be a critical mistake that will erode the foundation of our schools and the trust that should exist between our teachers and the administration. During a pandemic, we as a community cannot force our teachers to come just into school and face unknown risks that impact their health. Marty, that's three minutes. Thank you. The next is from Jim Langford, and he writes, Dear Falls Church City School Board Members. Allow me to introduce myself. My name is Jim Langford. I am a proud member of the George Mason High School class of nineteen seventy and proud Robbie Worth is our alumni president representative. Do you remember the saying, this is not my first rodeo? Well, the Black Lives Matter protest is not the class of nineteen seventies first protest. We are from the hell no, we won't go generation. In April of nineteen sixty-eight, we remembered it George Mason teachers explaining why Washington, D C was burning as a result of Doc. Doctor Luther King's assassination. This was also a time of veteran war pro protest, officials not knowing how to deal with sex and drugs, and yes, Watergate. It is, it was not for the Corona coronavirus pandemic, we would have celebrated our nineteen seventy fiftieth class reunion this month. Wow, fifty years of understandings to share from much more than just a historical George Mason perspective. Today I have two words to symbolize our high school, acknowledgement and forgiveness. By keeping George Mason High School name, we must acknowledge the strength and weaknesses of George Mason in the new high school building, a constant reminder of those we have disadvantaged and lesson learned for future Mustangs or the mistakes of our past. A statement similar to the display found at Luther Jackson Middle School. Second, keeping the George Mason name is our way of asking for forgiveness to those we have disadvantaged. As we attend and drive by George Mason High School, it will be a symbol of how we came together through our many protests, identifying our trends, transgressions, even disunity and emerge a stronger community like our nation did from the early nineteen seventies. For the two words of acknowledgement and forgiveness, I kindly ask the George Mason High School remain unchanged. The next is about changing Falls Church City school names from Norland Harlow. Dear Falls Church School Board, my dad was Lou Olum, a former Falls Church School Board member. Education was his passion, and I believe he made a positive contribution through his work on behalf of the Falls Church School System. He also was admirer of George Mason. When he needed inspiration, he would often find it during one of his frequent visits to Gunston Hall. If he were alive today, I know he would eloquently argue that George Mason name should remain on the Falls Churches High School. I believe you are in receipt of a well-researched and heartfelt message from Judy Fisher White. I fully support her position. Her facts and thoughts are compelling, and I hope that you give them serious consideration as you make your decision. Sincerely, Norland Olum Harlow, class of nineteen sixty-six. The next is from Joel Block on a on the school naming. My name is Joel Block and I teach at Mary Ellen Middle School. I have been a teacher in F C C P S since two thousand two. I understand the discussion about the remaining, about the renaming of some of our schools. I see why some people might want to change some of the names. What I don't understand is that there is no major discussion about the money. I don't think people realize that spending money on something new like changing names, the names of schools means that we will have to cut something. F C C P S has a limited budget. When you have fixed, when you have a fixed amount of funds, if you spend money in one place, you need to give up money in another place. Limited budget calls for trade-offs. Where is the money coming from to rename the schools? I want to know the trade-off that we are going to make before I can answer the question about name changes. What are we going to give up? Fairfax priced the name change at Justice High School per an article by Debbie Trong in the Washington Post on August nineteenth, twenty eighteen at over four hundred and twenty-five thousand. I know that our schools may not cost as much to change, but I would like to understand the trade-off. This year, the district cut salary adjustments to staff due to the virus and funding limits. The superintendent pledged that if we do have additional funding, that we would look at reinstating these salary adjustments first. I asked the people who want the name change, what are you willing to give up? What are you willing to trade to change the names? Are you going to privately fund the name changes? Are you going to raise taxes? Do you have another solution? I need this information to make an informed decision about supporting an issue. I know that name changes is or are a one-time expense and one-time expenses are different from regular expenses. I understand how if we have one-time money that we cannot use it to commit it to salary improvements because those are recurring expenses. However, since a bonus is also a one-time expense, one-time money could be used to compensate the staff through a bonus if they cannot be compensated as they were previously promised. If there is a one-time balance at the end of the year, I would hope it would go to funding our people and that the school board would look for private donations and outside funding if they decide to change the names of schools. Otherwise, I think the staff will perceive the name change as something the staff personally paid to happen. I don't believe compensating the staff should be the trade-off for the name changes. My name is Joel Block, a teacher at M E H, and I am not opposed to changing the names of our schools. I am opposed to discussing and or deciding to change the names of our schools without knowing how the city schools or schools will pay for it. Thank you for your considerations. Stay positive and test negative. The next is from John McDowell about school name changes, and he refers to Judy Dressendorfer's email that came earlier. Says, Thank you, Judy. Great research, and I hope that you it will influence the naming of the new George Mason High School. Without our history, we have no future. The next is from James Scott about name changes. Just a suggestion, why not ask George Mason University for copies of its deliberations before spending the money for prolonged gyrations involving involving a consultant? What kind of consultant would know anything more than a history professor anyway? And he's from class of nineteen fifty-nine. The next is from Pam Mahoney and Josh Singer. And they write, we write this letter to our community as members of it. We are educators for parents in and one of us and alumnus from the city school system. As we have reflected on these roles and tracked the conversation regarding the names of our schools, we support the decision by the school board to consider a change and encourage the board to create a committee of community stakeholders and historians to explore changing the names of George Mason High School and Thomas Jefferson Elementary School. The schools presently are named for men who played vital roles in the founding of our Commonwealth and nation. It is well-known by our community that Jefferson largely wrote the Declaration of Independence and was the first Secretary of State, was the third president and founded the University of Virginia after attending William and Mary. Mason wrote the first Virginia Constitution and the Virginia Declaration of Rights and was a vocal member of the Constitutional Convention. These notable accomplishments were in part made possible due to the privileges of wealth and the time based on their status as Virginia planters. As members of the planter class, they profited off the exploitation and trafficking of human lives. As planters, they made their wealth through the free labor of enslaved black peoples. And when these those peoples challenged the source of that, the source of that wealth, they would harm black bodies through dismemberment and death. These harms do not include the ongoing horrors that the condition of the Chetel slavery brought to the daily lives of those who were enslaved, including sexual violence against black women and family separation. In their time, both Mason and Jefferson wrestled with the morality of slavery, but always put considerations about the emancipation of enslaved blacks second to their own interest. While they may have had reservations about the bondage of enslaved peoples, these reservations never address the pervasive view of white superiority. Despite the contributions of both of these figures to our nation's democratic traditions, we cannot ignore the harsh realities faced by the enslaved peoples they call property. However, as much as of this conversation is about the past, it needs to be refocused on the present. Placing the conversation here and now turns the focus from historical figures to the students who enter our schools, excited to learn and engaged with each other and their amazing educators. Unlike an optional visit visit to Monticello or Gunston Hall, F C C P S students must enter these two schools, some over twelve hundred times, whose namesakes are a daily reminder of unresolved racial violence in our society. These legacies, while explored in the context of our classes, expose contradiction contradictions about our community's values today. Values that include the belief that all students belong and can succeed in our schools. If any student enters our buildings unsure whether they belong or can succeed because of the school's names, then the name should be changed. No student should have the added burden of proving they belong or the stress of marginalization due to the school's names. If any family member raising one of our students questions whether their student belongs or can succeed because of the names of our schools, then the name. Three minutes. Thank you. The next is from Eli Wildman, and it is about fall sports. Dear School Board, I've reached out to you to advocate for the safe possibility of fall sports, specifically cross-country. I am speaking not only for myself as a junior, but for all of the seniors on the team who have put in hard work over the past few years for the season. While I understand that some sports are precarious and potentially hazardous during these tough times, cross-country differs in that it can properly distanced and that it can be properly distanced and carried out safely. This can be done in a variety of ways, such as the use of spaced-out track lanes, staggered starts, a limited roster, et cetera. Unlike some athletics, cross-country doesn't require physical touching or even being in close proximity with each other. With the implementation of guidelines, distant coaching and the use of aforementioned methods, cross-country would be a safe athletic environment for those who want to run. On the other hand, I find it important to address the seniors. They have worked hard and tirelessly tirelessly for years now. For some, this could be their first year on varsity and for others, their fourth. While it's important to recognize the threat of COVID nineteen, exercising this cross-country season is a safe way to give their scene, to give their seniors an almost normal final year. Taking the right precautions is a way to give them this chance at a normal last season. I want to end with the appreciation I have for take for you taking the time to read this email and hope that you will take this into consideration. Sincerely, Eli. And the next is from Steve and Sally Kalanin. And it was, it's about the renaming of George Mason High School. And the the first part of this is is from an email, a second email, but it refers to the first, which was much longer. It says, Dear Laura Downs, this morning on an internet, I discovered the attached excellent article, George Mason, the reluctant founder, focusing on the life of George Mason as it related to the founding of our nation and the issue of slavery. I respectfully submit that Falls Church School Board members should read this article before voting to remove George Mason's name from the city's treasured high school. And in her first email, she wrote to the school, dear school board members, I'm forwarding to you this copy of comments which expresses the thinking of several George Mason High School graduates regarding the renaming of George Mason High School. These comments were not presented prior to your June thirtieth meeting. My purpose is to share these comments with the fellow George Mason graduates and to communicate the fact that the school board will not consider new names for George Mason until it decides if George Mason's name is to be retained. From Melody Marshall of nineteen fifty-four and Judy Potter Brown from nineteen fifty-five class have suggested well-known persons be considered for our school names, such as Madeline K Albright, the first you woman U S Secretary of State from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand one, Susan B Anthony, woman's suffrage pioneer, Sandra Day O'Connor, first woman on the U S Supreme Court from nineteen eighty-one to two thousand six, and Abigail Adams, wife of John Adams. Melody has added that she would be remiss if I did not include my ancestor in my suggestions, Chief Justice John Marshall, the fourth, fourth Chief Justice of the U S Supreme Court and the principal founder of the U S system of constitutional law. Carl LaRue of class of fifty-five submits that, as I understand it, Mason refused to sign the constitution because it did not banish slavery. Pretty good credential, counterbalancing whatever else he did. I believe, like he, like many slave owners, wanted to abolish slavery but couldn't bring themselves to lose the value. So just assume that it would go away as the nation expanded into areas not suitable for gang labor. Still pretty good credential. I find it harder to forgive Jefferson for the hypocrisy of his life compared to his words. But one of the most sacred beliefs of historians is not to judge the past by the ideals of the present. We call that sin-presentism. The great moments to Jefferson and Washington honor the good that has lasted. But we need not, and I do not defend honoring Jefferson at the level of the city's elementary school. Find a local hero. The teacher who, in my experience, did the most to make G M great, almost from its very beginning, was Miss Shirley March. I, like many others, am not in favor of changing the name of our alma mater. However, if the score, school board votes to remove George Mason's name because he owned slaves, I would be in strong favor of renaming the school after a George Mason teacher. Many outstanding teachers deserve consideration of this honor. The first choice of Ed Becker, class of fifty-four, and Jocelyn Caldwell, class of fifty-three, is Bill Snodgrass, whom Ed identifies as a selfless man, respected role model, honest, even-handed, and focused on the students. It is noteworthy that Mr. Snodgrass served as an advisor to the S C A Senior Classic Key Club. After his tragic accidental death, the nineteen fifty-seven Mustang Yearbook was dedicated to him. And the dedication, there was a letter and it read, Dear Mr. Snodgrass, when you left us suddenly and tragically, we lost, we felt lost and confused. In trying to find consolation, we came up with these words written by Dave Hubbell of the class of fifty-six to you, and we felt that they would say, well, what each of us finds it difficult to say. And it's called the greatest of all, and now abide faith, hope, charity, these three, but the greatest of these is charity by the Corinthians. The greatest of virtues is charity. There too shall faith and hope abound, but except where faith and hope are first, their charity will not be found. From whence does the best of charity come? It springs from the heart and soul unsought, for love and charity must be won and can never be made or bought. What then is the best of charity? That which is part of the giver is best. The thought from which charity springs, otherwise tis its grudging bequest. He then who loves his fellow man is greatest of all in charity, for having given so free of self, he will receive in eternity. Mr. Snodgrass was a World War Two veteran and is buried at the National Arlington Cemetery. I have a personal reason for favoring the renaming of George Mason after Mr. Snodgrass. Of my first day at G M as a tenth grader in September of nineteen fifty-six, Ms. Crocker, the guidance counselor, handed me textbooks from the little storage room adjacent to the chemistry lab as I stood in the hallway about a moment, about that moment.
That's three minutes.
Okay. And the next is from Lindsay DeValle, and it's information about the school reopening plan. Dear Dr. Noonan and F C C P S School Board, thank you for your tireless work during this unprecedented time in planning for the reopening of our schools in August. We, like you, share the goal of returning our children to school in person five days per week. We are writing to urge you to replace our current plan of hybrid instruction with full-time, in-person instruction beginning in August. Your careful and timely advanced planning leading up to the crisis in March allowed our kids to seamlessly transition to remote learning. For this, we are grateful. While education was moved online quickly and was a great stopgap, we cannot continue with this type of learning in the fall. We have the utmost respect and admiration for the creativity that you are using to get more children in the classroom, such as, such as those who are on I E Ps, English Language Learners, and students on free and reduced lunches. Sadly, those are not the only children for whom online learning is inadequate. We are the parents of two boys, eighth and fifth, who both struggle with A D H D. Their attention problems make learning remotely very difficult. We would argue that the vast majority of children do not have the attention span, drive, or diligence needed to truly learn without a live instructor for three full school days per week. They may get through the content and check the box as ours both did in the spring, but they are not truly learning the same way that they would with a live instructor. The state is entrusting you with the decision of how to open our schools and asking you to consider both its reopening guidance and the level of outbreak in our community to make this decision. As of July sixth, there are only fifty-five documented cases of COVID in the city, and the most of those occurred in our senior center, senior centers. Furthermore, the later recently sent by the state Health Commissioner and the State Superintendent to Dr. Noonan on July sixth was the purpose of communicating the updated phase guidance for Virginia schools should be strongly considered as you assess our reopening strategy. From listening to the June thirtieth School Board meeting, we know that the six-foot social distancing guidance is a major factor preventing F C C P S from fully reopening schools in August. The updated phase guidance for school states that both the World Health Organization and the Academy, the American Academy of Pediatrics are advising that schools can reopen with as little as three feet of spacing between people, particularly if they are wearing face coverings. The guidance goes on to state that in school settings, schools are encouraged to aim for six feet of physical distance to the greatest extent possible. However, if six feet of distance is not feasible, including inclusive of buildings and school buses, schools should implement a combination of face coverings and a minimum of three feet distance between everyone present. Given that your current plan already calls for face coverings and health screenings and the new three-foot guidance should be achievable in our schools, we urge you to do what is best for our children and reopen the schools for face-to-face instruction five days a week beginning on August twenty-fourth. Sincerely, Jeff and Lindsay DeValle. And the next is on reopening schools from C Ma Mahini. Dear School Board Members, I am submitting this writ written statement for consideration. I have two children in the school system, both who will be taking advanced classes next year. Will the virtual Virginia format allow them to be assigned specific F C C P S teachers that have experience in teaching and supporting advanced classes? I E, will my seventh grader get an honors algebra teacher with an honors English teacher that has experience with the subject matter and can brought and can provide online support? And will my fifth grade teacher receive a F C C P S fifth grade teacher that has a specific experience supporting a level-two A student placed in math five-six? I am struggling with the fact that only that one of my children is asthmatic and my husband is also. We are living in a very tight bubble to contain risk, and I am trying to balance that risk with ensuring that I don't compromise my children's learning plans in the fall. The spring worked wonderfully wonderfully for my kids. They had no issues with the online platform that was offered, and we were hoping for the same option in the fall. The virtual Virginia format seems like we won't have the same teacher support as we did in the spring. Therefore, we selected the return to the school hybrid option. But if the survey had included an online option that mirrored the spring, we would have selected that in lieu of returning to school. I am highlighting this issue for you as I think there may be more parents like me in F C C P S. Those that would rather keep their kids at home if the online option mirrored the spring. That would free up space in the schools, allowing more room for those families that really need their kids in school in person. Sincerely, C Ma Mahini. And the next is from William Ackerman about an after Labor Day start. Dear School Board, wouldn't it be more beneficial if we reverted back to an after Labor Day school start to the school year? I am all for starting the school year before Labor Day, once there is a handle on the pandemic. Until we do, it seems more prudent to give everyone, administrators, teachers, parents, and students more time to adjust to this new normal. Thanks for your time and consideration, Bill Ackerman. The next is from Alyssa Le Sage and on returning to school. Dr. Noonan and Falls Church City School Board, I first wanted, want to commend you and your teachers for the manner in which this new normal was handled. Our schools, our schools, teachers and principals built a ship while floating on an ocean, and that is nothing short of spectacular. I could never rightly express my appreciation of gratitude, as a mere thank you simply does not cover it. I, like many households in Falls Church, opted for the fifty percent in-person plan in the coming year. Despite having an immunosuppressed adult in our house, we need our, we knew our kids needed to see their teachers and their peers. It was worth the risk for their emotional well-being. However, I have many concerns over the last announcement to move to one hundred percent at some point in the fall. For days, my neighbors and I have been fretting about what to do. No one wants the online option, but no one believes that one hundred percent capacity will produce a safe or productive learning environment. We all know the risks of COVID nineteen are real, and should all, and should all the right parameters be in place, the risk can be mitigated, albeit not eliminated. In fact, each new body increases it. But you might be surprised to know that is these, that it is the those very parameters which are so necessary that are also of enormous concern. Having children wear a mask for eight hours, five days a week is not only uncondusive to learning, it is cruel. Furthermore, how will movements be restricted within the classroom to maintain social distances? Can a student walk up to a teacher with a question? How confined will they be to their safe space? Will they ever get to leave the classroom? If if they did get to venture outside, how are teachers managing a line with twenty kids maintaining six feet distance that is over one hundred feet long? So I imagine my kids sitting all day in their classroom, barely able to move because six feet must be maintained at all times, fiddling with a hot mask and miserable. At a hundred percent capacity, how much more time is a teacher? At a hundred percent capacity, how much more time is a teacher spending trying to get uh kids to keep their masks on, maintain social distance, monitor the bathroom to ensure hands are work, are washed, and actually teach? I understand and one hundred percent agree with the, with these parameters and the necessity that they are maintained, but I don't know if my kids can do it five days a week. At fifty percent, these issues are cut by half. There is literally more space to breathe, increased personal space, and breaks from the mask. I believe the fifty percent model will also create the most balanced and productive learning environment. I know none of this seems simple, and there are no easy answers. Thank you for listening, and thank you for all of your efforts, Alyssa. And the next is uh from Jimmy Alberson. Okay, School Board Members, my name is Jimmy Alberson. I'm a rising senior at George Mason High School. On July thirtieth, I sat down and watched the School Board meeting and the discussion of the high school name change proposal. From listening to the discussion and the proposed process for considering a name change, I came away with several concerns. First, I think that hiring an expert to provide information on the current namesake of the high school is a good idea. However, if the School Board were to spend thousands of dollars to obtain this information, I'm concerned there would be an immense amount of pressure to go forward with changing the name of the high school in order to justify the spending of money for an expert consultant. In addition, to make a decision about the future name of our high school within a mere few months would be hasty during normal times. But in the middle of this pandemic, the School Board also is consumed with many other important concerns, such as plans for educating students in new ways, allocating financial resources, and most importantly, ensuring the safety of its students and staff. With all of these other issues for the School Board and the community to address, a few months is not adequate time if your truly informed decision is to make, to be made on such a significant topic, such as a name change. Furthermore, it is not just the length of time that is important, but also the impact of when the decision is made. With the current plan, the possible name change of George Mason would be made in the middle of the school year. The school year for high school students is already filled with a high level of stress. Due to the pandemic, the stress is magnified even more. From only getting two days of in-class instruction per week, yet still being expected to learn all the information we need for SOLs, finals, and IB and AP exams, we already have enough on our plate. Seniors have even more to deal with due to the many changes now underway in our college application processes, SAT testing schedules, and the uncertainty of whether we will be able to visit colleges. We seniors should not also have to deal with the possibility that our college applications and diplomas will list a new name of high school that no one outside of Falls Church recognizes. A decision on whether to change the name should not be made within the matter of few months or right in the middle of the school year. This decision is far more important than having to replace a sign on.
That's the thirty minutes for.
Okay. Okay.
All right, well, thank you very much, Ms. Goodell, for reading all the comments, and thank you, Ms. Minson, for the timing. And thank you, thank you to everyone for your comments and for taking the time to write some very thoughtful comments that we are all reading, and we all are taking to heart and thinking through, and, and we really do appreciate the input and appreciate your, your thoughts. So with that, we'll move on next to our closed meeting, three point oh one, and I would seek a motion regarding the closed meeting.
Pursuant to the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the Board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose, to discuss or consider the identified subject matter, personnel under section two point two dash three seven one one A one, in particular, staff appointments, staff reassignments, staff resignation, staff retirements, staff performance, staff change in position, staff termination, dependent care leave, long-term medical leave, child care leave requests, and leave of absence, and student matters under section two point two dash three seven one one A three, in particular, non-resident tuition student.
Thank you, Dr. Dimick. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Litten. Ms. Goodell.
Yes, thank you. Dr. Anderson.
Yes.
Dr. Dimick.
Yes.
Ms. Downs.
Yes.
Ms. Litten.
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger.
Yes.
Ms. Russell.
Yes.
And Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. I don't believe that this, this session will be particularly lengthy, but we will be moving out of this Zoom into another one, and then we'll be back uh in probably, I would guess, under ten minutes based on what I've seen. So everyone, please head on over to the other, the other call. All right. Everyone appears to be back in, so um this point, I would seek a, a motion to reconvene to open.
Mr. Chair, move that we reconvene and open.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, thank you, Ms. Downs. Ms. Goodell. Ms. Goodell, you're muted.
Sorry, thank you. Dr. Anderson.
Yes.
Dr. Dimick.
Yes.
Ms. Downs.
Yes.
Ms. Litten.
Yes.
Dr. Reitinger.
Yes.
Ms. Russell.
Yes.
And Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. We have reconvened back and opened, and I would seek a motion certifying the closed meeting.
Whereas the Falls Church City School Board has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section two point two dash three seven one one B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by this School Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the Falls Church City School Board hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge. Only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Dr. Dimick. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Ms. Goodell.
Dr. Anderson.
Yes.
Dr. Dimick.
Yes.
Ms. Downs.
Yes.
Ms. Litten.
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger.
Yes.
Ms. Russell.
Yeah.
Yes. Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. Um, we'll move on now to, so we have certified closed meeting, we'll now move on to recognitions and reports for which I have none at the moment. Uh, so then we will move on to the consent agenda, and because we are in a electronic meeting, I believe we do need to actually take a roll call vote to approve the consent agenda. So I would first seek a motion about approval, and then we can take a vote. Ms. Downs.
Uh, Chair Anderson, I move that the Board approved the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Downs. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Litten and Ms. Goodell.
Thank you. Um, Dr. Anderson.
Yes.
Dr. Dimick.
Yes.
Ms. Downs.
Yes.
Ms. Litten.
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger.
Yes.
Ms. Russell.
Yes.
And Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Right, thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone. We will now move on to our business in action, business action information for the night. And we're opening seven point oh one here with a presentation for the special exception site plan for the West Falls Church project. So, Dr. Noonan, I'd like to turn it over to you, if that's okay.
Yes, thank you, Chair Anderson. Good evening, everyone. Nice to see everybody this evening. We're fortunate to have Evan Goldman and his team here, uh, along with Wyatt Shields, I see, is on, our, our city manager, and Carly Aubrey, who's been one of the project managers for the team, to share their SESP submission that they've been working on. But before they get started, I, I wanted to say that we've asked Evan to focus on some of the changes that have happened since the last time you all had a chance to see the SESP draft before it went in, um, and also to, uh, to, to share with us sort of some other elements that have come into play. I also want to just take a second to, to thank Evan and his team, uh, along with Wyatt Shields, our city manager, for continuing to coordinate strongly across both organizations. We are obviously in a highly intertwined project over at the site, and it's going to take all of us to sort of make this work well together. And Wyatt has, has been an excellent partner, and Evan has been extraordinarily helpful in working through all of this. And then the backbone behind it really has been Carly, sort of the project manager, and she and Kristen have worked very closely together as well, so want to thank them for their support. But tonight, I will turn it over to Evan. Evan, we have your slides, but I don't know if you want to share your screen, or if Kristen is just going to go ahead and do it. It's like it's up there.
Now, this is great. First of all, thank you, Dr. Noonan, for that introduction. That's really wonderful, and I really do appreciate it. We value our partnership with the schools, and it's really been a great partnership to date. Um, as, and the city as well. Carly is certainly, uh, the workhorse of this entire, uh, organization, or everything we're trying to do. So my name is Evan Goldman. I'm Executive Vice President of Acquisitions and Development for UYA. Uh, it's an absolute pleasure to be in front of the Board again. Um, and what I'll share with you tonight, quite frankly, is very similar to what you saw a few months ago. Uh, so there aren't really many changes at all from that moment. I'll highlight a few of the key changes from the SCE, and then really just focus on a few of the pretty renderings. Um, and then, of course, allow you guys to ask whatever questions you might have. So Kristen is going to be, uh, working the slideshow, and we can just move on to the next slide. So, um, for, you know, th- this image here is just, it's the first time we were starting to show the overall site plan in conjunction with Virginia Tech and Moda to the North. Um, you're, um, probably aware, uh, but Virginia Tech is moving forward with a comprehensive plan amendment, um, as is a Moda site that will link this property, the high school site, to the metro, uh, long-term, which is really exciting. And so this is really the slide that we'll spend time on today. The, the bigger drawing is our SESP submission that we just submitted in the last month. Uh, the bottom right corner is the SCE approval from last year. And so, um, generally, if you squinted and looked at these drawings, they would look very, very similar. Um, and we're proud of that. We really kept to, uh, almost every single thing that we've promised in our initial RFQ submission. And the changes are as follows, and most of these were changes that I reviewed with you already. Um, but we did combine the two apartment buildings. That was largely done because of construction cost overruns. And so what used to be block C and block A are now combined in block A as one rental building. We still have the micro units, which is a great amenity, because they'll be smaller, less expensive units for rent. Um, block C, which used to be a rental building, is now a condo building, and I'll show you for the first time some renderings of that tonight, uh, since that's the closest building to the school. Um, the other change was that the parking that used to be below the office and hotel is now an above-grade parking garage labeled as B three. And, uh, there's two reasons that's important. Number one, um, when, when the parking went below grade, we lost the ability to have school-oriented artwork uh, right across from the school, and I think this opens up that opportunity again. We're very excited about that and working with the school on that. And then, secondly, given where cars are going, there will be a time, likely in the life of this ground lease, when single-owned autos will probably go away, and that would open up the opportunity for redevelopment on that parcel, whereas below-grade parking, of course, would be lost forever. Uh, the third change is the entrance coming into the project from Route seven, and I'll share one other slide on that in a moment. This was the proposed entrance that we submitted with our SESP that was rejected by FCDOT and VDOT. Um, and so we have modified that design, and you'll see that in a moment. And then the third, the last change is we have rotated in order to fit the above-grade parking, sorry, into two, uh, there's one of the changes, and I'll talk about that. The other change is we've added a separation between the residential building across from the community grove of the high school to give a little bit more breathing room. So we set that building back about thirty-eight feet from the property line. It used to be right up against the property line. And so what's nice about that is now there's a little bit of separation. Uh, you have green, you have stormwater management and plantings in that zone. Um, that will also allow the music school to have a sidewalk in front of their entrance, that they can actually enter off of that space. Um, and it creates an extra way for parents, for kid, for parents, as well as for visitors to the project to get in and out and around by increasing the grid of streets. The last change, which was due to the addition of Lane Four and the addition of the above-grade parking, is that we've rotated the office building at the corner ninety degrees. And because of that, we've had to push the B four office building about sixty feet into the high school parking lot. And you've seen that on this plan, as the B four building, and on the bottom, you can see that we were already into the parking lot to some extent. It now goes further, and in return, we would have to replace the school parking when time comes to build that building in the future in Phase Two. But it does not affect any of the Phase One school parking plans. Um, let's go to the next slide. Um, really quickly, uh, this has not changed dramatically. Red is all retail, so the ground level of the plan is all retail. Uh, the two things that have been modified that the school would like to know about is, number one, we've opened up, if you are at Haycock and Street C, um, there's a traffic light there now. Uh, kids can cross from the Federal Realty Shopping Center. There's a pedestrian passageway that takes them, you can see an open space in green, takes them up the stairs and through to the commons as a safe crossing that is away from cars. Uh, secondly, we've added a traffic light at Mustang Alley in Haycock in the SCE. That was a, um, uh, hawk signal. Now it's a full traffic light, which will make it safer for kids to cross, especially to get to the bike lanes on the north side or the shared use path on the north side of the street. On Street A now, we've added a little bit of retail going towards the school, and then in Aqua, you can see the music school, followed by the addition of Lane Four. So those are the real changes that, um, what we are trying to do, and we think we've done successfully, is made the pedestrian experience from Haycock all the way to the school entrance more attractive. The next slide is below-grade parking, which I don't know that we need to spend time on this unless there's questions. But I'll leave this, um, we'll have this in the deck if you have questions about it. The next slide is the intersection. So this is the new proposed intersection that we've submitted to VDOT for review. And unlike the past intersection that curved to the, to the west in order to meet up with Chestnut, what we're actually now proposing is that Chestnut closes at the end before it hits Route seven. It was going to be turned into a right-in, right-out, so now it would close. A new intersection with a traffic light would be created that would give access to the shopping center across the street. There would be an easement through that shopping center back to Chestnut. So for local residents, for businesses, they would be able to access a traffic light there, which for many in the community, they're excited about it. Um, but it wouldn't create the type of funnel of cut-through traffic that the neighborhood was concerned about. More importantly, for the school, it creates a safe pedestrian crossing on Route seven. So for any of your residents that are coming from the east in the city, walking along the south side of Route seven, they'll be able to cross the street safely there if they don't cross at Haycock. And most importantly, for your parents leaving the site after drop-off or pickup, they'll have the ability to get out on commons and make a left onto Route seven to go back towards the city. And one of the deficiencies of our old plan was we did not have that left turnout. So all the cars had a funnel on Mustang over to Haycock and make a left at that traffic light. So this will be a better, more, more expeditious left turn back towards the city. Uh, this is in review, so clearly, uh, we had never talked about this in the past, but having a letter from the schools, quite frankly, supporting something like this to VDOT and FCDOT would probably be a good idea, and to the local supervisors. The next plan is simply a circulation plan. And so, uh, we don't need to go through this in detail, but this is here if anybody has any questions. Um, but the next plan shows the circulation when your buses are, um, lined up in the orange arrow area on Mustang Alley. And so not much changes there. And then lastly, uh, I can go to the next slide, sorry. Yeah, there we go. Um, we've still maintained the ability for closing down the central part of the park on evenings and weekends, if, you know, not very often, but once in a while for, for a big event. Uh, but all the garages are accessible from the side streets. And, okay, this is a view of the project in three dimensions now, looking, heading towards the metro. Next image is showing you that same three D image, keep going, there we go, from the view of the high school. And so we'll pause here for a second. Um, what this is showing is the grove in front of the high school entrance, the new street, the condo building which steps up and terraces away from the school towards, towards the main street. And then also on the garage, you can see the opportunity now to do artwork embedded on that garage, which we'd like to do in, in coordination with the schools, and have that be a living mural over time with a school-oriented art or, or art generated by children in the school along with your teachers. Um, the next image, I'll show the last few images, I believe, of the renderings, and we have, and then we have shadow studies, and that's it. So these are now, you haven't seen these yet, these are the, uh, three renderings we've created as part of the SESP that start to show the architecture of the project. You can see the condo building, which is closest to the school, is very modern. It picks up on the. It picks up on the high school design where you have the surrounds, window surrounds that are more geometric in shape as your school does overlooking the new field, the football field, and then you have an inset panel of a different color. In our case, that's a black metal panel. You're seeing all the retail streetscape come alive with different storefronts, the Central Park space that we've promised, that we're really excited about. And very active and alive. And then the hotel and the office building in the distance. The concept here is for the architecture to have a similar feel, white and bright colors, some grays and a little bit of charcoal and black, and then pops of color on individual buildings. The next rendering, you'll see the multifamily apartment building as you're looking towards Route 7 in the park with these pops of red on the balconies and in the window millions and the rest of it in white brick. And then, of course, the Central Park space, we keep going. The last rendering is showing the hotel. And once again, these really nice wood panels, wood-colored panels, and then this yellow pop of color around the entrance to the hotel in the center. Okay, now we'll get into some shadow studies. I'm going to fly through these, but I'll have them for Q and A. The SCE submission, this was the shadow studies for the spring equinox, so March 21st at 10:00 AM, noon, 3:00, 8:00 and 7:00 and 5:00. And so we were asked to show what the shadow study impact would be of the move of the office building. And so if we go to the next slide, what you'll see is two things. So with the condo building setting back further, we actually got a little bit of benefit on the high school plaza there relative to the other design. The office building at the south, at the bottom, the southwest corner closest to Mary Ellen Henderson is a little closer, it's 60 feet closer. We're also showing it a little taller in our original SCE. We only shown it as a shorter building, and so we are now showing it at the maximum height, not that that was what would be built, but it does create a top taller shadow. But even then, by middle of the day, you know, the shadow is well off of the school and even during most of the day, the shadow is off of the school and certainly in the afternoon. And the next image is the summer solstice, which of course looks great almost all the time because it's, the sun is high above the head, above head. Both at the SCE and the SESP. Go to the next image. Keep going to the fall solstice, which is very similar to the spring solstice, so we can skip that. It's almost identical. And then the winter solstice, which is the last sheets, whether it was the SCE as you're seeing here or the SESP. You know, other than the high point of the day, there is a shadow on the buildings and that's just the nature of the winter solstice with the sun not getting that high out of the ground. Obviously, it's not coming out of the ground, you know what I mean? The next slide, I believe, is our, oh yeah, sorry. This is showing you the pedestrian passageway for the kids going from Haycock out towards the commons. And so you can see the idea of creating something really special on the stairs that's inviting artwork along the walls, really cool lighting above. And the last slide is showing that in context with the garage, sorry, the garage artwork concept that we'd like to propose, which are these panels. I mean, to have to work with the school to come up with what the right material is for the artwork. But they can either be hung over time where each class creates a kind of a class gift that becomes artwork on the buildings. Or we can come up with some larger mural artwork that is indicative of the school. So there's many opportunities here. And I think we can just skip this for the sake of time. I think that might be it. Let's just see if there's any more. That's it. So with that, I, you know, love to answer any questions you might have and really appreciate your time.
So thank you very much, Evan. That was, that was a good presentation, you know, helpful presentation for us. What I'd like to do is, is before we get into questions, I just want to make sure to give Dr. Noonan a moment to remind us of the timing for the process from here on out, if that's okay. And then we'll get into questions that the members may have.
Sure. And I probably should have asked Carly to to give the overview on timing, but this has now been referred to boards and commissions. And Carly, I'll invite you to sort of correct me if I'm wrong. But August 11th, I think is the date that we would like to get some feedback to to you. Is that, is that right, Carly?
The deadline we had for boards and commissions, we set for July 31st. And that's primarily, we have a work session with council scheduled August 10th. And we're hoping to get most, if not all, comments back by then, so it can be discussed at council. And then the development team can take all those comments to work on a second submission.
Okay, so if the board has comments and would like to send those to me, what I can do is I can co-locate those into a single document and then pass them on to to all of you for for review. And then we can send them over to Carly and the team, if that seems like a reasonable approach.
I think that ought to work. And if there were a need to have, you know, more discussion about this, we do have, we do have the option of adding an item to our work session on the 28th to be able to to actually deal with this in some way, but for now. So let me just open this up to questions from members then. Anything about the presentation or about the new plan that that you'd like to learn more about? Ms. Downs.
Thank you, Chairman Anderson. Last we met, we talked about the phase two office building. And given that it's going on top of our parking lot, I, we were assured at that time that there would be parking we could use within that office building. And I just wanted to confirm that that was still the case.
Yes, that's the case, whether whether the parking would be in that specific building or in the above-grade parking garage next door. We haven't figured out, but yes, there would be parking spaces that the school would agree to. That would be available to the school.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Downs. Ms. Litten.
You may have told us this before and I just can't remember, but with the office building, can you remind us up to how tall that may be and how close it is to the school?
Yes, definitely. So the original SESP approval is for a 15-story building. I believe in our SCE sunshade studies, we only showed a 10-story building because we didn't expect to build a 15-story building. We still imagine that building will likely be around 10 to 12 stories. But we've shown it as the 15, just to show the worst-case scenario from a sunshade study perspective. And sorry, and the distance from the school, you know, I had the exact number which we can submit to you. It's around 200 feet from the corner of the garage to the Mary Ellen Henderson School, which just to give you a sense of scale, is similar to the distance of buildings across from each other on Route 7. So it's a big, it's a really big distance.
Great, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Litten. Are there any other?
It's around 150 feet. Sorry. Still similar to the distance across Route 7, but not 200 feet, around 150.
Thank you for the clarification. Are there other questions? Anyone else? I have to kind of scroll up and down since not everybody fits on my screen. Oh, okay. Dr. Dimick, please, go ahead.
Thank you for your presentation. I'm wondering about the width of the, the width of the sort of sidewalk, the area on Route 7. A lot of students commute to school by just going straight up Route 7, so I'm wondering about the width there, the barrier between the road and the students. And then I noticed you had sort of a parking garage in there or that there was an in-and-out there. Is there anything planned for the morning or afternoon when students are coming and going in numbers up? Up Route 7, one of the things I would love to see with this is is a more, a safer and more inviting route to school.
Yeah, those are great questions. Thank you, Dr. Dimick. So, so first of all, along the Route 7 frontage, the 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 frontage from the building to the street varies a little bit, but it's never less than 20 feet. And in that 20-foot section, there is a six-to-eight-foot tree pit and tree panel that runs along Route 7 to protect people and keep the sidewalk on the inside. There is a shared use path that I believe is a minimum of 10 feet. That's just an open, clear 10-foot space that runs that entire length, so for people to walk on. Typically, a sidewalk in an urban area would be six feet, so 10 feet is nice and generous. And I believe the comments we got from staff was that they wanted the tree pits along Route 7 to be continuous with landscaping to serve as more of a buffer between the cars and the people or students on the sidewalk versus an individual tree pit with space in between. So that's helpful to what you're talking about. To your last question about the, what looks like a curb cut called Lane 3, which is the exit, you know, exit essentially from the garage. The good news there is that's the office garage. So as you can imagine, in the morning, since you can't, you can only get right in in that direction. There's no curb cut there, so you can't make a left in at that direction coming from Route 66. So most of the cars, we expect to come into that garage from Street A or from the commons and then through Lane 2, which will avoid a lot of cars coming in at that moment in time when kids would be walking in the morning. And then in the afternoon, when kids are leaving school, is not a time of day when most people are going in and out of an office building. Typically, that's later in the day, around 5:00 or 6:00. So there should be less of a conflict with that particular use since it's office than there would be if it was, say, residential with all the residents leaving at that time of day to go to work in the morning. But that said, the key to the design of the project is that it's all designed as an urban street grid with slower streets and more visibility and appropriate stop signs. So it should be safe regardless of that. Or will be safe. I shouldn't say it should be. It will be safe. And and the City Falls Church, of course, is going to review that as well.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Dimick. Are there other questions from anyone on this?
If I might, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Runninger. Please, go ahead. I have to keep scrolling up and down to see everyone, so.
No worries. Thank you. Mr. Goldman, if you could talk a little bit more about the phase two B4 building and why it is proposed to be moved over closer to the school. When you talked before about the height of the office building, were you talking about that? And what's the proposed height of that building as well? Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Great question. So to give you an example, our current phase one office building is 125,000 square feet of office. And that building is approximately seven stories. The maximum we could build in phase two is 200,000 square feet. I shouldn't say the maximum, but the the SCE approval is for 200,000 square feet. So if we were to build the full parking base plus the 200,000 square feet above it, I believe we end up being at about 12 to 13 stories in that building. And that's why we've now shown it as 15, just to make sure that we're showing the maximum it could be. Most office buildings being built in a market like this today are more like 150, 180,000 square feet up to 200, so maybe it's a little smaller. But we felt like we should show the most aggressive side. So that is, that is the height I would expect somewhere in the 12 at most 15-story range there.
And why is the proposal to move it closer to the school again?
Great, thank you. So so that came in December when we received initial construction pricing for the whole project because of the cost of below-grade parking somewhat specific to this parcel, but in general, it came in, let's see, it came in 40, 40 to 50% over budget. As and so as part of trying to make the project work economically based upon the land value and everything else that we've negotiated with the city, we needed to come up with a less expensive way to build the parking. And so that resulted in this idea of splitting the parking garages. Instead of having one really big one on the right side of the project, we now have two smaller ones that are each on each side of the project. It allows the overflow parking for the school to be closest to the school and creates a better buffer to the school. But it, but that coupled with the lane four addition created a shortage of land in this area. And the only way to get all of the buildings to still fit and meet all of the program requirements that the city is desiring in this location, we needed about 60 feet more. We were, we're still well under the economic development parcel size that you have the right to sell, the 10.4 acres. But understanding that it was a potential impact on the school, the first people we talked to were members of the school staff and then, of course, the school board.
Mr. Runninger, any, anything further on that one?
No, I need to do some additional look back at the plans and presentations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions or comments? So if not, I guess I'll, I'll pick up a little bit on Mr. Writinger's thread, Mr. Goldman, if I can, which is, so, you know, the, you answered one question I was about to ask. I want to reconfirm, and I guess this is also a question for Mr. Shields and Ms. Aubrey, which is that the, with this change in the land that's being proposed, if it were to go forward as proposed, there's, we're still under the the economic development 30% rule that we have with the agreement with Fairfax County. So I heard you to say yes to that question. Is that correct, Ms. Goldman?
Yeah, that's correct. I believe it's right around 9.7 acres.
Okay, you know, and and I think picking up on on this theme a little bit, you know, it is a loss of a parking, of parking space that barring major changes in in the ways people get around, would still be an issue. So the question is just sort of ensuring that there are adequate guarantees that that the parking that we would need to have for our school staff, for our students is available, even if this, even if this were to go there. So knowing how that works, so let's.
Yeah, so we've been negotiating a parking MOU with the schools. In fact, we have a meeting tomorrow morning, I think at 9:30 to discuss the next red line of that agreement. And in that agreement, we are agreeing to, you know, to the extent this building gets built, we would have to replace the school parking within that structure. So the school is made whole. There is an opportunity there to the extent the school doesn't need as much parking. If you find that, you know, you have more people commuting together or using other means, the school has the option to consider something of building less parking, but to the extent that all the parking is needed, we would be required to replace it.
Okay, thank you. I'll pause and I'll make sure if anybody else has anything they'd like to ask, we do that. Just scroll up and down looking for hands or other things. Okay, I guess then I'll pick up another question, which is just reconfirming traffic flow during the, during the school day, during buses arriving and and drop-off and also pickup. There were in the original, in the earlier plans, so and still is, of course, Mustang Alley and and flow of buses through there. And if I remember the presentation you've just given us right there is the point just before lane four where that would be blocked off in in the bus operating times. There was also Street A ending at a, at a drop-off point. And it's just sort of hard to tell in the size of the presentation, but remind me what the current version talks about about that, please.
So that has not changed since the SCE. It's the same concept. There's a turnaround. You can kind of see it in gray. The end of Street A. So that is still the parent pickup and drop-off for high school students. Essentially what we negotiated with all of, with the school back as part of the SCE. In the SCE on the bottom, you can see that it's just dotted in in black, you know, black line. It hasn't been had it really designed. Now it's designed more in keeping with the design of the high school plaza, but it's the same concept. And then you are correct, the buses in the morning coming from Mustang Alley, of course, will drop off right in front of the high school or the middle school and then keep going in the afternoon. And that would become a one-way street that wouldn't be accessible from the project. And same in the afternoon at bus pickup. Street A would essentially end after the parent drop-off and pickup, so those cars can't continue through to Mustang Alley. So that Mustang Alley becomes just for school buses.
Okay, thank you. Are there other questions that anybody has at the moment? All right, I'm going to make sure I'm not missing anyone. And if I don't, I'm not seeing any additional hands, any additional questions. So thank you, Mr. Goldman, for the presentation. Thank you for the questions at this point. So can I just confirm, again, we're looking at the timing. Ms. Aubrey, we're looking at the the deadline you're hoping for is a response from the school board by the 31st of July. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. All right, unless there's anything else on this item, I think we, I think we are done here. I'm just looking to make sure at this point.
Chairman Anderson, this is Wyatt Shields. If I could just thank you and thank the school board for your time and thoughtful input into this SESP. And I just want to commit that we will do everything we can to address any comments or questions that you have. And we'll work closely with Kristen Michaels and Superintendent Noonan together to do that and with the development team. So I just wanted to thank you, thank you in advance for that.
Well, thank you, Mr. Shields. And I'll take this moment to thank you and Ms. Aubrey and all of your staff. You're a good partnership on this and carrying this project and our high school project successfully. So I see Mr. Writinger has a hand up. Mr. Writinger, you are muted. And he's trying hard to get off of mute. I can see that.
There we go. I so a sub because I I looked back and I looked at the the rendering that we saw in March of this year. And it still showed that second phase office building as being well in the parking lot farther to the right. And I I thought Mr. Goldman had just said that the garage had not moved farther to the left or close and closer to the schools in the newest plan. And I wanted to find out what the what the actual um, fact was.
So I I don't I don't know exactly what you're looking at. Maybe um, if you can send that. I I have a meeting with Kristen and Dr. Noon in the morning. Maybe if you could share it with them, they can show me in the morning. But I the vision had always been approximately sixty feet to the west. I don't think it's changed at all in the last six months. So it may just be that the sketch that you that I shared was off a little bit, but that's always been the concept. So it should be, I mean, it may be off by a few feet here and there, but it should be very close to where it was.
Mr. Goldman, there was a presentation that the board had access to back in May, as I recall as well, that that had showed that change, but um, it may be in between those two times that that we're thinking about. So, but yeah, uh, Mr. writing, can you can you, you know, work with with Dr. Noon on that particular issue?
Sure, I mean, just I I I'm happy to. I'm just, you know, the it looks, and I I want to go back and make sure I didn't miss anything, but it it looks closer to the schools than it used to be, and it's being proposed to be higher than the schools, and I'm troubled by that.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, the height has not, you know, the height has always been potentially fifteen stories. So that hasn't changed, but the um, I don't believe the the distance may have changed within a few feet, just as we find finally designed the site, but it should be very much in keeping with what we shared with the board. Um, so I'll take a look at that and let you know.
All right, thank you, Mr. Writing. Are okay for this point? Okay, I'll I'll take that as a yes. Um, are there any other last questions, comments before we move to the next item? And again, thank you, Mr. Shields, for for your partnership on this uh, and for the work on the high school as well. Uh, it's all it's all one, uh, it's all been a good partnership to work with. So thank you. All right, not seeing any um, any other comments or questions at this point. We'll go ahead and move on next to our our next agenda item. And uh, thank you, Mr. Goldman, and uh, thank you, Ms. Betterall and Mr. Shields and Ms. Aubrey. Thank you for your for for your presentation and info.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Good night.
So at this point, we'll go ahead and move on to um, our next uh, item on the agenda, seven point oh two. It's the new item, the new seven point oh two, which is reopening of the school reopening plan. So uh, at this point, Dr. Noonan, I'd like to turn this to you.
Great, thank you, Chair Anderson. Um, and thanks, everybody. So tonight, um, we'd like to give you just sort of an update on where we are. Um, but before we do that, I want to thank just a couple of people that are on tonight who are also going to help with the presentation. First, of course, William Bates, Kristen Michael, and our Empress of All Things COVID, Rebecca Sharp. So thank you all for being here. Appreciate your support. Um, what I'd like to do is a couple of things tonight. I'd like to walk through um, the updated data that we have with respect to the survey information that we've received from the community and from our teachers. Um, I want to talk a little bit about our multiple scenarios that we are continuing to work through. Um, I'd like to walk through where we are with each of the schools. Uh, and then address specifically sort of the uptick in email traffic that you've received over the last seventy two hours or so. Uh, and then um, talk a little bit more about some of the other things that are happening. And then turn it over to William to do a brief update on instruction and Kristen to do a brief update on operations. And then we'd be happy to happy to take your your question. So let me um, let me begin um, by going back to our reopening survey. And I'll start with the information um, that we received from our parents. And right now, uh, we are up to two thousand five hundred and twenty four responses to our survey. Um, the survey did go out to our uh, rising kindergartner parents as well. So we are short roughly a hundred or so uh, surveys, and we're able to get now go back and identify the hundred surveys that were missing by cross referencing email accounts that those went to with the power school that we put that we pulled the information from. Um, but the fact that we have now uh, two thousand five hundred and twenty four responses is uh, is is not an insignificant number, and we're really excited about the the return rate that we've gotten. Um, in terms of um, sort of the the big questions that were asked, um, the one that we're paying the closest attention to are students that are um, would like to come back and be enrolled in our hybrid scenario. And right now, eighty nine percent of those respondents or two thousand two hundred and forty seven students and parents have replied that they'd like to come back in our hybrid scenario. And eight point two percent, which is two hundred and seven students, uh, have indicated that they would like to move into an all online um, process. And we're going to talk a little bit about that tonight as part of our update. So um, that's the first piece of information that we found in the responses from parents. The number one thing uh, that we've learned from this uh, survey that parents care the most about when they considered whether or not to return or not to or to return to the instructional setting was the connection with other students uh, and their peers. Eighty seven percent um, of the respondents marked that as the highest priority. Um, sixty percent uh, noted that uh, which is the second leading reason or rationale for wanting to consider bringing their students back were were the challenges with online learning. And the last was considerations around COVID. Um, with respect to um, face coverings, which is going to be a really important component to what we are doing. Um, eighty six percent of our parents responded that their students have face covering and is not concerned at all and comfortable with wearing them. Um, we have some students that need um, some support with wearing face coverings, uh, and we have some uh, of the parents that responded are also going to be online, so they won't need to wear a face covering at school, but we are planning to do some support um, with respect to face covering. So for example, um, we had two, a hundred and forty nine parents respond that they would like to have some sort of video describing how to wear appropriately a face covering. And so we're working with John and others uh, to develop some resources that will help along the way with with the face covering. Um, so so those were the big, um, the big priority areas that we were really paying attention to. As we went into this, we also looked at the percentage of students that had reliable Wi Fi, and we have ninety eight point one percent of the respondents have reliable Wi Fi. Remember, we're only about a hundred students from the complete um, number of students that we have. So it's a fairly accurate count of of percentage of those that are uh, available to have online. Um, and then we asked the question about riding buses and if there wasn't uh, a need to look at different strategies to get to school. Uh, seventeen hundred and eighty eight parents replied that they would drive. Nine hundred and ninety one replied that they would walk. Five hundred and ninety six said they would bike. Uh, three hundred and ninety four said that they would carpool with a quarantine. Um, we have about two hundred and twenty eight drivers at the high school. Um, and then about a hundred and ninety three said that they would have significant challenges to uh, get to school if we didn't have um, routine busing. So we are, we are looking at that. Um, and again, can cross reference those numbers uh, or those email addresses with students. Um, a significant number of our parents indicated that they would not be participating in our daycare program, seventy three percent. Um, eighty eight, eight point eight percent said that they were still unsure, but we did have a hundred and twenty six students that said that they would participate in before and after, and a hundred and forty four said that they would participate before school only. So we do anticipate that we are going to have some return uh, to our daycare, uh, our daycare programs. Um, the next is the staff survey, and at this point, we have three hundred and forty nine respondents to our staff survey. And again, that's about a hundred and fifty short of uh, the full complement that we would be looking for to include all of our part time hourly people as well. So we are uh, working with supervisors and principals and the like to track down um, those folks that haven't actually completed the survey yet. But those that have completed the survey have indicated um, that they would like to take us up on um, our childcare that we are offering. Um, and we're really excited to be able to to offer that. We are, after having a conversation today with my regional partners, we are one of the uh, few, if only uh, school divisions in the northern region that is offering free daycare for their employees. And so at this point, um, we have fifty one teachers who have indicated that they would like to take us up on that free that uh, free childcare. About thirty one uh, teachers have indicated that they're unsure, and about seventy seven percent said that they would not take us up on on that opportunity for whatever reason, maybe they don't have kids. Uh, we did ask uh, how many people would be applying or considering applying for some sort of leave specifically to care for um, a child whose childcare center was closed due to COVID. Um, and they would then, as a consequence of that, move into F M L A. Um, and right now, uh, we only have a total of two people who have indicated that they are going to take some try to take some kind of leave associated with the CARES Act to move on to F M L A to care for um, a child whose daycare center is unavailable. The interesting piece to this that we have to consider um, is if it is a school age child, because we are offering childcare that isn't um, that is a factor in whether or not someone would be eligible to take leave um, to take care of that that student. With respect to uh, anyone wishing to take a leave under the sick leave um, section of the uh, Families First Coronavirus Response Act. Uh, right now, we have uh, four people who have indicated that they are going to apply for some sort of sick leave as a consequence of that. Uh, but and about six point nine percent have indicated that they're uncertain. They're still trying to figure out some of the details. Um, a lot of that uh, is with with respect to um, work modifications, perhaps beyond uh, beyond a mask, uh, beyond social distancing and the like. And ninety two percent said that they would not be applying for any kind of uh, leave. So when you couple those together, we're at about uh, ninety seven uh, ninety eight point nine percent of our staff uh, look like they will be uh, not applying for any kind of sick leave or uh, any kind of childcare. Um, I don't want to misrepresent in any way the data that uh, I'm sharing with you tonight. Uh, these are data uh, about whether or not people will return uh, or their indications of return. Um, we we can't underestimate um, the fact that a lot of our staff are still worried about coming back, and I do want to talk about that a little bit later. Um, just making sure that we follow all the processes and protocols. Uh, but I do want to make sure that the um, the board knows that there is a significant amount of uh, worry and and fear. And I did share that in the community message that I sent out last week um, to the broader community. So that's where we are with the data. Um, the next I wanted to talk about is just sort of this notion of planning for multiple scenarios. Um, we we don't know what uh, what the world is going to look like six weeks from now. And six weeks from now is when our students are slated to return. Um, so as a consequence of not knowing um, what what the world is going to look like, one of the things that we said at the very beginning of this process is we put together the school uh, return plan was that we needed to remain flexible, and we needed to create um, opportunities, whether we were going to go fully online or fully back to school. You might even remember me putting up my hands like this and saying, and then there's some sort of hybrid in between, right? So we have been working very hard on making sure that we are flexible and that we are nimble enough regardless of the scenario that we find ourselves in to be able to serve our students. So at this point, we believe that we have the online piece continuing to um, to be worked on. Um, so if we ended up having to go to an online only solution, um, I think we shared with you some of the uh, staff training modules that have been put out, so you can begin to look at those. Uh, we've asked our teachers to be ready for that online uh, solution if we needed to go fully online. We know what all the way back looks like. Um, so we've been really focusing on what does the hybrid look like? And that hybrid scenario for us means part of the day or part of the weekend school and part of the week out of school. So I'd like to walk through um, each of the schools, and I'm going to do um, Jesse Thackeray first, and then I'd like to do the secondaries, and then I want to talk about the two elementary schools. Um, if if that's uh, acceptable to all of you. So let me start with uh, J T P. Um, and let me give a huge shout out to Marie Barudy. Uh, Marie has been an extraordinary um, leader and director of our early childhood programs in the city of Falls Church. Um, she is taking a very difficult and complicated scenario and trying to make the most of it. And and by the way, I I think it goes without saying, this might be one of the biggest challenges that any of, well, let me just say it this way. This is the biggest challenge that any of us have ever faced in our careers. When I look around at John and at William and at Rebecca and at Kristen and our and Tricia, none of us have ever faced anything like this before. So we really are uh, in uncharted territories and really trying to do the best we can, given the circumstances that that we have and trying to communicate effectively about that. But Marie has never faced anything like this either, and she's done an extraordinary job under extraordinary circumstances. So we are in a a tricky position, um, obviously down at Jesse Thackeray insofar as um, we are required by law to serve our students with special needs and those that are in high risk. Before we serve our what might be called typical peers, um, who also happen to be our tuition paying students at Jesse Thackeray. So on June thirtieth, uh, Marie sent out an email to the community and parents and expressed to them that uh, obviously, um, we're we're really sorry. Um, but unfortunately, we can't serve the typical peers at J T P this year and still maintain appropriate social distancing with our special need students and our high risk students. Um, and that was not met with great enthusiasm, as you can imagine, um, simply because I think people are well, I you know, we're all parents on this call, and and I think the fact is we put a lot of time and energy in making sure that our kids have a place to go in the fall. And I think our parents of our typical peers were ready um, to have their students join us here in the city of Falls Church schools. And I totally understand um, now finding out on June thirtieth, you know, two months before we're going to go back to school, that it's a challenge to find a place. So Marie has um, sent out to the families that uh, were unable to join us this fall um, some options that were available, and we have heard from some of the families that they have tried to seek out some of those options, and unfortunately um, haven't met with great success. So um, so Kristen and I went and talked with Danny Schlitt and to Cindy Mester earlier last week um, to have a conversation about what the possibilities might be to offer some preschool programming at uh, the the recreation center um, that part Rexon Park um, hosts. And Danny um, Schlitt, who many of you know, is uh, let's get to yes guy, which I really appreciate a lot. And he said, I'm sure we can figure something out. Um, and so I just, I want to let the board know and the community know that Danny Schlitt is working really hard to try to find some options for our uh, for our students down at the rec center. And as more information becomes available, we will be sharing that because we don't want to leave our families um, in a position where they don't have an option for the fall. We want to serve them. Um, and and after talking with some of the parents even last night, um, who are some of those preschool parents that don't have an option. Uh, one of the things that I heard very loudly and clearly was even if it isn't a full time or a partial day or a part time option, it would be just fine uh, for the vast majority. So we're we're trying to figure that out. So I wanted to let the board know that we are working as creatively as we can uh, to sort through that. Um, the secondary approach that I I wanted to talk about is really no different at this point than we had talked about originally. We are still planning uh, for the teacher work day on Mondays for uh, potentially some intervention and maybe even some synchronous instruction if intervention groups are necessary at the middle and high school or students need intervention. But we are looking at an alternating day, A B schedule on Tuesday through Friday. So that means that a student would come on Tuesday and Thursday, or a student would come on Wednesday and Friday, and they would rotate through their schedule. The schedule that has been put out is a one through seven, one through eight period schedule. So on the first of the days, they would see the first three or four of their teachers, and on the next day, they would see the next three or four teachers face to face. And on those in between days, they would be receiving asynchronous instruction, meaning that they would be working um, with their teachers on additional work um, that they would be doing for the class. It might be reading. Uh, it might be project work. Uh, it might be working collaboratively over um, over Power School or through some Google Hangout with partners and the like, uh, maybe practice. It may be additional um, athletic activities to stay in shape. But there's a lot of things that our teachers would be planning for that asynchronous time on the days that students weren't at school. But there's a lot of things that our teachers would be planning for that asynchronous time on the days that students weren't at school. What, there are some other options that we are exploring, um, but I am not in a position at this point that I would want to say them too publicly. Um, but one of the pieces of feedback we received from our secondary teachers was that seeing students um, in that scenario. Only once a week um, is not sufficient for our teachers. And we totally get that and we support that. And we want to find a way to create more opportunities for our teachers to see their students. One of the things that we know, however, is that um, by providing, for example, a straight seven or a straight eight-period day. On their days that they come, create too many uh, passing periods and there's too much intermixing that can happen. So that obviously creates some concern around spread of virus. Um, and additionally, when you take the day starting at, say, eight o'clock and going until three. When you add eight periods in there, add in passing time, the amount of time the teachers would have with their students would be really limited. So we're trying to, again, get really creative and think about other ways that we may be able to provide opportunities for teachers to see their students more often. Um, you know, if you listen in my experience to all of our math and our world language teachers, they would tell you, we need to see our kids every single day. And we want to, we want to be responsive and and respectful of that. So a lot of it has been frankly turned back to uh, Matt and to Valerie Hardy, Matt Hills and Valerie Hardy. To help work with their teams on getting creative to find solutions to how they can also work through um, that scenario. And then I want to um, talk briefly about the elementary schools. Um, and this is where I think you caught a a bit of a spike in the last uh, seventy-two hours with respect to some communication. And I want to take um, just a second um, to to talk about our our process and and sort of how we came to where we are. Um, and the first, first thing I want to say is, and I don't, I don't think that anybody here um, wouldn't understand that. But we are really trying desperately to balance um, as many of the competing interests as we can that we hear throughout the community. And I think even through tonight's um, public comment, as Marty so eloquently um, shared the letters from people, you heard. Sort of stories on both sides or desires on both sides. So we've got, we've got parents on both sides of an issue and we have teachers on both sides of an issue. And we really are trying to balance those competing interests in an effort to do what we said we were going to really try to do. And that was to serve as many students as we possibly could, given the space that we have available to us. So about a week and a half ago, I I challenged our team, um, and I challenged our team with great intentionality. Um, to look at all of the spaces that we have and to try to figure out if there's a way that we could bring more of our elementary students back. Because, because again, we have never, and I I have never said that we were going to do a certain percentage of students that came back. We were going to try to use as much space as possible while stay still maintaining that social distance and make sure that we have all of those uh. All of those processes in place to make sure that we're safe. So, so with intentionality, intentionality, I asked that our teams really dig into and look at all the space that might. Uh, be available and to get really creative and really to push into every space. And see how we may be able to um, leverage each space that's available. So um, a number of members of the team did an extraordinary job being really creative. And and looked at spaces, for example, at Thomas Jefferson, like if we use the chorus room as a classroom and put. Or music in the in at Thomas Jefferson as a classroom and we put music in the cafeteria, could we then teach a class in the music room? Absolutely. Um, right now, our family resource center is at Thomas Jefferson and it utilizes a full classroom. So what if we relocated the FRC for a while and use that as a classroom? When you walk into Thomas Jefferson and go down the hall, one of the classrooms on the right-hand side is currently you being used for storage. So that's another space that would be available to use for classroom space. So they, they um, through their really creative way, came up with seven spaces that we could utilize. At Thomas Jefferson to um, put classes in that would allow us to bring many, many more students back. And Tim and his in uh, instructional leadership team at Mount Daniel did the same. Um, and they reviewed the building and actually found that because of our addition, um, the classrooms on the addition and the kindergarten rooms that are there. Are much, much bigger than a standard classroom and can accommodate many, many more kids. So out of this really intentional focus and out of this desire to be creative. And out of this desire to ensure that we utilize every space possible to the fullest extent. Um, we, we realized that we could actually serve all of our elementary school kids. Um, and so our principals then went back and met with um, their instructional leadership team at uh, Mount Daniel. And uh, Paul met with his team. Um, and as you can imagine, there's, there's again, sort of that idea of competing, competing ideas, sort of a co- a collision, if you will. Uh, between um, this fear that I alluded to earlier and where we are with bringing numbers of kids in. And so I say all that because I I want to make sure that the board knows that um, we've been really trying to be creative. And we've been really trying to be intentional about our work. And um, and in this particular circumstance, um, we deviated from the plan because we got really creative. And in this particular circumstance, it it may not have been vetted and discussed as deeply as it could have um, with our staff. Uh, and as a consequence, I think that's why you are getting some of the the email traffic that you're getting uh, and that we're getting as well. But I want to assure you that the plan that we had originally put together had massive teacher input. Had massive community input. And so as a consequence of sort of this collision of ideas and our commitment to making sure that we. Are safe in our schools, to make sure that our teachers are safe in our schools. We want to um, we want to go back to our really good plan that we had. Um, and and sort of put a hold or put a pin, if you will. In that idea of having those extra spaces at Mount Daniel and at Thomas Jefferson. And know that when it's right, we will revisit that and we'll talk about it with the staff and faculty. And when it's right, we will begin to bring students back. But we know right now is not the right time to bring our students back. There is too much concern, there's too much uh, unknown about actually what the routines and procedures are going to be as students are coming back. Um, but the beauty of us having done that work and ha- asking the team to be creative. Is when the time is right, we'll be able to execute. So it's another one of those places where um, when we think about making sure that we have multiple um. Multiple o- options, we will have an option on the table when the timing is right. But for now, um, we do intend to uh, pull, pull back and let the first bit of school go. And then reassess and evaluate kind of where we are. Um, and and let me tell you about assessing and monitoring where we are, because I think it's really important that this board knows as well. As the community, um, when we talk about safety, um, safety to me is making sure that we follow all of those universals of mitigation that we know about. Making sure that students and staff are wearing face covering. Um, making sure that we have appropriate hand sanitizing, making sure that we are appropriately social distancing in our buildings. Making sure that we're doing temperature checks when students come through the door. Making sure that we have done that survey, that health survey before any kid comes to school. And having protocols in place so that if there is a student that comes to school that has a fever, for example, we know exactly what to do. Or if a student isn't wearing a face mask, how are we going to work with that student to help them understand the importance of a face mask? We're going to continue to monitor like crazy the data. Um, I I have the um, Fairfax County Health Department and the Virginia Department of Health data up on my computer every single day. And I'm watching the trends and I'm listening to our partners and making sure that we are responsive um, to to the data that we that we hear. And we're going to continue to do that and monitor that very closely. And and the last thing I would say is, um, we, we are hearing um, from our staff and we are hearing from our families. Um, we have uh, we have our listening ears on, we always do. And some of the best ideas we've had have come from our community and come from our staff. Um, and we are really interested in innovating and trying to find ways that we can leverage our capacity. Um, not just our physical capacity, but also our intellectual capacity to find ways to provide the very best options for our students. And so we know that there are a lot of people out there that choose to communicate in a variety of different ways, whether it's through social media. Uh, outlets, whether it's through email, whether it's in person. I text message a lot with uh, staff and and uh, the like through the school system. Um, I'm on the phone all day, uh, but I want to assure this board and assure the people that are listening that that we are listening. Um, and and that we are taking the feedback very seriously. Uh, but at the end of the day, um, our number one factor in all of this is making sure that our students are safe. And making sure that our faculty are safe. And uh, anyway, I ju- I just wanted to make sure that you kind of knew where we were on that. Um, the last piece I'll talk about is uh, for those parents that are not interested in sending their students back to school. Um, we are working through um, Virtual Virginia and William's going to talk a little bit about instruction tonight. Um, and at the elementary level. And then we're also talking about using our High C program at the high school level for students that uh, wish to do that. And then I'll ask Kristen uh, to give a little bit of an operations update. And then if Rebecca has anything to round us out, because she knows everything about everything, um, she certainly can do that. And then we'd be very open to taking any questions that you have. So Mr. Bates, I will turn it over to you for your uh, brief instructional update.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Dr. Noonan, and that was extremely thorough, so I don't have a whole lot of detail um, to add to that. Um, as you had mentioned to to the board, not a lot has changed. And so um, we are looking forward to moving forward with our plan. As far as communication, I I would like to add, just so the board and and everyone else knows that. Um, we are planning to send out an email to parents, providing them with updated information and clarity based upon our FAQs. And so the plan is to do that on Friday. And then we would send out a second email about a week um, after that. And we would ask parents to select a specific option based upon this information and clarification on a lot of the questions that are coming in. But the second email would um, ask parents to select an option, whether it would be face-to-face specifically or the online. And that way, once we're able to get that hard data, we can have our principals and school teams begin to start grouping students and creating schedules. And that would allow them to balance the classes. As um, Dr. Noonan mentioned before, we're looking at Virtual Virginia as our online platform for elementary schools. And so once we have that hard, hard data for the number of students who would be opting for the online. We can um, determine how we would uh, best staff that. Whenever we look at the um, elementary schools, as it was mentioned, uh, we have a couple of options there. So we have a face-to-face with an online option. And we have a full online option. I'm not going to go back over the fa- um, the face-to-face and online alternating day, but it would be the two days per week. With um, alternating days where we would look at grouping our students and we would include asynchronous and synchronous learning. And we also are looking at opportunities to support, further support students with resources. By sending home packets or workbooks or other supplemental resources at the uh, very lower levels. For students to engage in additional asynchronous learning while they're at home or do reinforcement um, activities. As far as Virtual Virginia is concerned, we're looking at that for our elementary schools. That is recommended by the Virginia Department of Education. And just to give a a little more detail on that, it's a curriculum that's created by a select group of. Of licensed Virginia teachers and it's specifically designed to be engaging, interactive and age-appropriate for our students. It contains four components that include an introduction and objectives, content with video attachments. Applications that would include games and interactive activities as well as hands-on. Now, why we're looking at the Virtual Virginia model for the elementary school only is because. The Virtual Virginia Outreach Program requires the school division that's using it to staff it with an FCCPS teacher. And we'll talk about some differences between this program that's offered for elementary students versus the Virtual Virginia that's. That's offered for secondary students. But because we are required as a division to staff it with one of our teachers. We're not able to assign students to a specific classroom, but. The FCCPS teacher would monitor students and their progress through Virtual Virginia. One of the things that I I also want to point out, it's it's very. Uh, some of the questions that have come in that we'll share with parents in this message. Is that students who are opting for the online through Virtual Virginia. It won't be a fully synchronous, face-to-face or live learning um, model for for students. So students who are signing on to Virtual Virginia, they won't sign on at, say, nine AM and be sitting with a teacher the entire time. A a lot of the work that would be done through that Virtual Virginia program would be asynchronous. And what we would again, look to have the teacher do is. Support students and their progress as well as monitor students and their progress. Again, depending upon the number of students and. Um, depending upon how we're able to staff it, our goal would be to have some synchronous, a face-to-face. Um, learning and instruction occur in our mathematics and and language arts. One of the other things that we've looked at with Virtual Virginia is that. Because it's aligned directly to our VDOE and and SOL standards, which is good, it's not aligned to our IB. And so the fact that we would have our teachers supporting our students through Virtual Virginia. Our teachers have the ability to support the IB tenants and infuse the IB tenants. Some of the other questions that came in from parents were around the rigor of Virtual Virginia. Um, and so again, with us having the teacher, we could do some work around um. Rigor and make some necessary shifts based upon student progress and and based upon students' uh, unique needs. So that's, that's where we are with the elementary, with uh, Virtual Virginia. And synchronous and asynchronous learning. And then for the secondary, we're looking at the hybrid. Model that would include face-to-face and online, which Dr. Noonan had already outlined, where students would attend two days a week. And they would engage in synchronous learning and and work through their schedule. And again, there's some things that we're looking at as far as what are the best ways to accomplish this, to give. Um, students and teachers FaceTime together and accomplish um, the goals that the teachers are setting forth as far as meeting those unique needs of students. And then we also have our option for for students and parents who opt for a full online. And that's going to be through our High C program. The reason why we're not looking at Virtual Virginia for six through twelve. Is because students who would opt for high school or middle school level courses in six through twelve. Would not have an FCCPS teacher. They would have a a t- a teacher that is assigned through Virtual Virginia. And as we shared before, some of the concerns that have come up. Most recently are if I have a student, whether they're at the middle school and they're accessing high school level courses, or they're at the high school. And my, my student is taking, say, an honors course. Well, Virtual Virginia doesn't on um, offer honors courses, they have standard level courses. And if the Virtual Virginia teacher is not making those instructional shifts based upon students in FCCPS. Who are accessing uh, Virtual Virginia, then that's something that we want to have a little more control over. And so that's why we're, we're looking at the um, the High C as our option. The second thing is the IB. We've had questions come up around students who are either on track to take uh, to fulfill an IB diploma. Or who want to ta- have that option of taking um, some IB classes. And we know that Virtual Virginia, again, although it's prescribed, it's aligned to the standards of learning through uh, Virginia. It's not aligned to IB. And because we wouldn't have our teachers providing the instruction. Our students wouldn't be able to have that experience with, again, adjustments to the rigor or adjustments in alignment to IB. So that's why, why we're. So that's why why we're looking at that. The other thing I would mention, and this has been shared before, is for for both levels, we're looking at our most vulnerable students having opportunities to come into school more often. And so we have a plan for that. And Rebecca Sharp may want to talk a little more specifically about that. But any concerns around students' IEP needs being met, we we have that plan. Any concerns we have around students who are being supported through our ESOL program? And in some cases, as we're looking at the data, if we are identifying students who may be on free and reduced lunch or economically disadvantaged, if we're seeing specific needs as far as academic progress and academic achievement, then we would be looking at opportunities to bring those students back a little more often. As far as the high C program is concerned, one of the things we're excited about about that is is that it is it's been developed and built by our teachers with an understanding of the needs that our kids have. And it's directly aligned with the Virginia standards of learning, as well as it's built with that understanding of what we're seeking and striving to provide to our students through that IB lens.
Great. Thank you, William. And Kristen, do you want to do a quick operational update?
I would be happy to. I just really want to start off by thanking all of the support teams. They're working really diligently to ensure that we're providing the support that our school leaders need in order to successfully implement the reopening plan. Our team has really been focused on the health and safety of our staff and our students. So when we think about exposure protection, first, we've been looking at face masks. So we'll ensure that all of our staff members and students who need one will have a face mask. And I really wanted to give a great deal of thanks to our PTAs who are really helping us in that effort. To further support staff, we've also purchased and are making face shields. So they would completely protect staff, their entire face, all the way down to the top of their chest bone. And then the last thing in that category is teachers have also told us that they want students to be able to see their mouths, particularly when we think of pre-K. So we've also purchased face masks that are clear, so those students will be able to see those teachers. As we continue on the health and safety, we're looking at increasing airflow in our building. We know that's an important component. We've also really been working this summer to ensure that not only all of our buildings are clean, but that we have cleaning strategies in place that will successfully help us when school reopens. So those strategies include changes in the equipment that we're using so we can clean better, ensuring that we have that same technology available to help us with cleaning our buses each day. And then also ensuring we have cleaners in our classrooms to support teachers and students and making sure that we're keeping the environments clean all day long. We're working with schools in terms of signage. One of the shout outs I really want to give today is our extended daycare program. And Katie Clinton started with our students coming back to daycare yesterday. One of the things that you'll see is they did just an incredible job in terms of signage. So if you went into the building this morning, you would see their excellent staff there engaging with the students. And the students are very well spaced out. So in the hallway, they have lovely little marks that say six feet, six feet. And all of it is done at Mount Daniel, for example, in their school colors. And when you see the kids working in a room, they all have tile squares that that Katie put together for each student. So they have their designated space and it visually helps that student see where their space is to work. So we're working on signage in all of our buildings to support students, teachers, and staff in terms of remembering to keep that space. Our other teams are really looking at how we can support this effort. So when you think of onboarding, HR has been working to get our staff hired and in place and working with technology to ensure not only we're hiring our teachers like usual, but we're also getting them their technology and helping them with their summer learning and their professional development in support of our instructional team by making sure they have their technology equipment. Our food service and transportation teams are both working very diligently and planning for school return. And our daycare program, in addition to the wonderful programs that they're offering for the students typically enrolled in daycare, is also planning for that supervision of our employees' school age children. So we're really doing a lot as we look at supporting schools and and we're really excited to provide that support. So thank you for the opportunity to share that.
Great, thanks, Kristen. And Rebecca, do you have any last comments that you want to make?
We had our meeting today with the Health Department went very well. They're going to provide us with three finalized documents. One, they're going to give us their general Health Department guidelines and recommendations specifically for our school division and for Fairfax, since we're all in the same health district. So that's been very helpful. They're giving us specific guidance in terms of scenarios in case we do have an exposure in our school building. So we know specifically, you know, what we're going to do. We have very detailed protocols with that. And then the document that we worked on today that'll be finalized are our procedures for our school health rooms. And if we have and how to create safe spaces or isolation areas if we do have students or staff who have are displaying symptoms in the school. So those are all really great things. The other things that we've been able to work on this summer, I don't know if you've seen some of our parents' summer series. This week, our topic is helping students understand COVID. And we're doing a elementary session tomorrow night. And then on Thursday night, we're doing a middle school, high school session on talking to your teen about COVID. And part of what we're talking about with parents in those sessions and the information that we're sharing is about how to help your children, you know, understand the why we need masks and working with them to help them get used to that, understanding the importance of social distancing. And, you know, especially when we all come back together. So we've really been focused a lot on getting resources and information out to parents this summer. And I'd like to give a big shout out to all of our school counselors, social workers, and school psychologists who have done an amazing job of helping to put all those sessions together and deliver them.
Great, thanks, Rebecca. So just a couple of things to wrap up before we take questions. The next major sort of deadline for us is that on July 27th, the principals are all going to submit to to me their opening plans for the school year. And in that opening plan, there'll be things like, how are you going to? What doors are kids going to come in so that we're appropriately social distancing? Where are the where are the temperature stations going to be? How are you going to identify what six feet apart are? How are you going to, where's your quarantine room? If someone gets sick, how are you going to identify where that quarantine room is? What's your communication strategy and the like? So those are coming to me on the 27th. Then when our teachers do come back, they'll be able to begin setting up their classrooms. But but between now and the 27th, just by the way, our teachers are deeply engaging with their principals on those return to school plans. Our teachers have a lot of agency over what it looks like when students come back and how those processes are going to work. In fact, we need our teachers to be part of that planning process because they are going to be have such significant roles along with our bus drivers and the like. Two, two last things I wanted to comment on. The first was that I had a regional, I think I mentioned that I had a regional meeting with my region colleagues this evening at five o'clock. And there's still a lot of uncertainty among many of our school divisions. And you've you've seen sort of what's happening around the country. There are some school divisions that have said that they're going to come back 100% face to face. There are some school divisions who have said they're going to come back 100% online. The vast majority have said they're going to come back in a hybrid scenario. But I did want to let you know, I spoke to my friend and colleague in Arlington, Dr. Francisco Duran, about their decision to open later and all online. And much like we are trying to do as well, they are listening to the data and they received some information from their health department that indicated that it would be not a good idea to begin face to face based on the data in Arlington, which is different than the data that we have in Falls Church. So again, I think it's a good reminder to all of us that we are continuing to look at the data. We are continuing to speak with our health division and our health district. And we are continuing to meet with the Virginia Department of Ed. But I don't I don't want the board for for a second to think that we haven't deeply engaged our staff. I think the miss in the last 72 hours was on the five day a week return. And so we are now going to, I wouldn't say walk that back, but we're going to put it in the bank as a really good plan so that when we can, and it's appropriate, we will be and safe, we will begin to bring kids back. But for now, we are going to go with our original plan that we had shared with you that had been well vetted, that had lots of input from our community and from our teachers and the like. And it also was the source document for parents making decisions about whether or not they were going to put their kids back in school or back online. So with that, Chair Anderson, I will stop. We've we've given you a lot of information and would welcome any questions that you have.
Thank you very much, Dr. Noonan, for a comprehensive overview. And of course, thank you, Dr. Noonan, thank you, Mr. Bates, Ms. Michael. Thank you, Ms. Sharp, for a very comprehensive overview of everything that's going on and especially understanding, kind of looking at the at the plan that that's there for the elementary school now. So I'd like to open it up for members to ask questions. And and I'm just going to look around the room continuously, as it were. Hand up first from Mr. Ryan here.
Thank you, Chair. I have several questions. I think the first is for Ms. Michael. And I apologize in advance if this is a super stupid question. I just, this is not my area of expertise. One of the questions I've got is around HVAC in the schools. And so I'm, you know, in a very, very silly analogy, I'm thinking about cars where you can hit max AC and you get recirculated air, or you cannot get recirculated air. And the question is, is there anything that can be done with existing HVAC systems in schools to avoid recirculation? And two, if it's not too late, and do we want to consider? And could there be any options with what we do in HVAC systems in the new school to be able to not have recirculated air? Working on the assumption that this sort of problem may be here to stay.
These are in no way stupid or whatever word you used in terms of questions. These are excellent questions. So when you look at our systems, we were talking about this earlier week. We often think of back when I went to school, the air conditioner that they had was a window air conditioner, right? And what that air conditioner did was it really brought in air and it cooled it. But it wasn't like recirculating the air or taking the inside air out and bringing in fresh air from the outside. So when you look at the systems that we have, right? Typically, what they do is we have systems that condition the air that's in there, but we have another system that's bringing in outside air. So when you look at what we want to do in these cases, we want to increase the amount of outside air. Now, at the same time you're doing that, obviously, there's an impact on heating and air conditioning. But it's super important to look at bringing that outside air. So when you think of rooms that have windows, right? People are less concerned because they know that they can open the windows. So one of the things that we're doing first is we're specifically focusing on rooms that don't have windows, ensuring that we're bringing in way more outside air there than we currently are. So that's the first step that we're taking. When we think of our new high school, our new high school is cooled using geothermal technology. So when you look at that building as well, it also has systems that bring in outside air. And we can control how much outside air is coming in. So I do believe that building is actually going to have much better air quality as we compare to our current buildings. Geothermal, when we visited other school sites, the air just even felt better when you went in the building. But the other component that we're doing in all of this that's super important is our filtration systems. So in addition to that outside air, ensuring that we're on top of our filters, which we are, and really looking to make sure that those systems are working well. So our maintenance department has been really active that summer in those endeavors.
And just to sort of add to that, Ms. Michael, isn't there a certain percentage of outside air that needs to come in? We've done all the testing in all of our buildings and all of the buildings either meet or exceed the amount of outside air that's required to come in to meet that requirement, correct?
Correct.
Great, thank you. My second question, I think, is from Mr. Bates. And it relates to the online program in the secondary schools. So it makes sense to me what you said about moving away from Virtual Virginia towards high C to enable more use of IB in advanced classes. I guess my question is sort of twofold. One, how much of the non-virtual curriculum will be available for high C programs? So for example, what are the odds for a student who's taking a mixture, say, of standard and HL classes that they'll be able to do the same sorts of things if they go online? And second, the other side of that coin is, do you think there is a chance that the the decisions about whether to send kids to school or have them attend virtually will move more parents to have their kids attend virtually because there will be less of a sacrifice to doing online education?
Yeah, well, if I may, I'll start with the the second question first. One of the things that we've had a lot of conversations about is whether it's at the elementary or at the secondary. If parents know that they are going to have an FCCPS assigned instructor, might that sway them in making their decision to do online versus face to face? And we know that there's a real possibility, now speaking specifically at the secondary level, there's a real possibility that based upon some of the questions that have come in, that if a parent knows that if they're accessing online through the high C program and they're assigned into or scheduled into an FCCPS teacher's classroom, that that might be the very push or variable they needed to help them make that decision. So so we're looking at that. I think that's why it's important that we get any clarifying or updated information out to the the community so they can make that decision, so we can have that hard data, so we can start scheduling out. The second thing that that we looked that we looked at and we talked about just this afternoon is that we think it's really important that we maintain a firm commitment to honoring students as best as we can in the course selections that they want to take, but also that they need to take based upon their interest or a particular area that they that they focused on. And so our primary goal right now is to do our best to honor the first option that a student has selected, even if they're going into an online, the online program. But we know that there might be some cases where the school counselors need to meet with the student, have have a conversation with the parent and look at, because of staffing concerns, because of our size, or because of the sheer number of students that are planning to come back face to face versus online, that we might not be able to staff this particular class, and let's say, an elective class with that hybrid online teacher. So let's look at your second choice, or maybe in some cases, a third choice. But those are those are definitely things that we've looked at. And as best we can, Principal Hills, Principal Hardy have conveyed their commitment to, as best we can, be flexible in our scheduling of students so we can we can honor those choices, but knowing that there might be some conflicts for one reason or the next.
So I need to ask, I think, a supplemental question then. Thank you. That was very helpful, sir. The so it's a very, again, complex, not just complicated question because all these pieces are interrelated. Is there going, can we talk a little bit more about what the process is going to be? And, you know, is there going to be a communication coming out? I apologize if I missed it so far about, you know, classes. I know you can't say that everything will be available, but there may be some classes that will simply not be offered in the high C space. And with regard to the communication moving more towards high C and away from Virtual Virginia, is, are there, what's the right way for parents and students to maybe update the data that they've provided to the school system about whether they're attending or not? And making sure that they understand what the options are and being able to make an informed decision? And by 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 asking that question, I'm not saying that all of this should have been lined out already. I'm just trying to figure out what's the what's the right path forward, recognizing that I'm just trying to figure out what's the right path forward, recognizing that everybody's dealing with, as Dr. Noonan would have said, unprecedented circumstances.
Yeah. Well, the counselors and the administrators at the middle school and high school, they know what courses students have either selected or are already signed up for. And so we know the courses that we need to offer. One of the challenges, you know, oftentimes is right around this time, as we look at balancing out the master schedule, we have to make a decision. And I see us kind of following a very similar process, but we have to come to the point to where we make a decision that whether it's based on numbers, whether it's based upon course progression, are we able to run this class that may have seven or eight kids in it? And our staffing is really getting tight? Or are we able to look at other options for kids? Whether we can have another section of that same class and put students into that and not have their schedules conflict? So I just, I say that not to get too far into the weeds, but the, as far as the communication, I think you had asked about that. One of the things, sorry, Peter, I think you were going to jump in.
Go ahead.
So, so one of the things that we're looking at doing is, once we get this communication out and we clarify any questions that parents may have based upon information around High C, what we currently offer through High C, and then looking at, okay, well, here's what we currently offer through our High C online program. But in addition, with these new numbers that have come in, we might have to be a little more flexible in pulling this teacher here who's maybe in a science, who might, we might want to add a particular physics class, or another teacher who's in the mathematics, and look at how we could potentially offer High C in certain areas or for certain classes that we may not have offered in the past, depending upon the numbers. But we will also have to pay very close attention to, again, total number of kids who are opting to select certain courses.
Thanks very much. That was all the questions. I just, I would, and I know both you and Dr. Noonan know this, urge that the communication on Friday be as clear as possible, because, and I'm sure you already foresee this, you know, the changing circumstances could result in a fair amount of churn and a lot of questions that could overwhelm your ability to respond as parents try to figure out and students try to figure out what's the best risk-reward option, particularly at the secondary school level. And so I appreciate all the work you guys are doing, but I expect you're not going to have a happy weekend.
I'm not sure I've had one in a while, but I'll look forward to it. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
One hopes you can have as happy a one as possible, at least, but yes, I know. Thank you, Mr. Reining. Looking around for further questions from other members. Ms. Downs.
Thank you, Chair Anderson. Thank you, Dr. Noonan. And Mr. Bates, that was a great presentation and really provided me with a lot of helpful information to answer questions. Dr. Noonan, I also want to thank you and your staff for all of your hard work. These are obviously unprecedented times. People are, emotions are running high, people are stressed. And so, you know, I do appreciate the comments about going back five days at the elementary level and that maybe taking people a little bit, the staff, a little bit by surprise. So thank you for that. One question I did have is, you know, I think it's interesting, because as you read the guidance from the different agencies, again and again, it says, you know, pre-K through third are the learners we need to get back to school in person. But the ironic part of that is those are also the kids who are going to have the toughest times. They're young, they don't, you know, in terms of self-discipline, wearing masks all day. So would you foresee something like, if we're, I don't know, in October, and TJ's smoothly moving along, but Mount Daniel still, you know, we're not quite there with getting the students to have that discipline to sit apart, not touch each other, that sort of thing, that you could see TJ go to four or five days a week and Mount Daniel stays at two?
Yeah, first of all, thank you for bringing up the fact that there is a lot of information out there. And there's a lot of conflicting information out there as well. And we, and I would say this to you all, and I would say to the community as well, you know, we're really trying to err on the side of caution here, to really stick with that six-foot social distance whenever possible, as opposed to going with the change that the WHO put out that was three feet with a mask. We're looking at six foot with a mask. So more to your point, we want to remain as flexible as possible. I think flexibility and nimbleness, based on our size, is going to be the key to any success that we have. So if it is going smoothly at one school and they're able to do it and the other school isn't quite ready, absolutely, we could. But I think you raise a really good point about our youngest learners and really trying to get them back as quickly as possible. And that really was the genesis of us trying to get really creative and thoughtful, was trying to figure out, how could we get our kindergarten, your K3 kids back? But yeah, we want to stay as flexible as possible and have all the options available to us to exercise in as quickly as possible, a day or two.
Thank you.
Sure. You're muted, Greg.
Thank you, Ms. Downs. Ms. Russell. Thank you, Dr. Noonan.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan, and thank you, Mr. Bates and Ms. Michael, for all that fantastic information. I think that gives the community a lot more to go on. I just had, and these are things, I guess, that may not, we may not be there yet in terms of the plan. But first of them, I guess, was just a suggestion that actually came from a community member who is also works with pediatrics. And she suggested, and I guess what they're doing, and I know, is they have, I can't remember what they're called, but specialists who are helping kids learn how to wear the masks and work with them directly. And she actually suggested that we might want to engage our OT and even PTs in, you know, being able to help with that process, in addition to the kids, you know, who are in the special populations, but even just in the general populations, making sure that we're deploying those people to help as much as possible in making that transition. And I guess the, so technical questions I had was, so with regard to sick leave, and again, this might be further down the road, but how are we going to be handling if a teacher needs to quarantine, either because their student was sick, or they are sick or otherwise? Like, what is the, I guess, the plan in terms of how that pay is going to work?
So there's a multitude of scenarios that would kick in that the health department's helping us with. So first and foremost, we would let the health department determine the quarantine and the quarantine period. But it would likely be 14 days, and the CARES Act does provide for coverage for that teacher to not have to use their personal sick leave in the case that they needed to quarantine because of an outbreak. So we've tried to share that with our staff as broadly as we could. So that's a piece of it. I thought you were going somewhere else, like, how would we cover that class? And that is a
That's further on my list, yeah.
Yeah, that's a whole other thing. But Kristin, do you want to take that answer any further?
I think the only thing that's important is that covers not only our contracted employees, but hourly employees as well. So it's really critical, we want our students and our staff, if they're not well, to stay home, because that's really part of our box-it-in strategy.
Okay. And I guess, and again, this might be further down the plan, but in the event that we have an unfortunate teacher who has to quarantine more than once, I guess I'm just not clear with how the CARES Act, like, how many times can you use that? Because it just seems if you had a situation where you were sick, and then maybe you had a kid or two in your class sick, and you had to quarantine again, I'm just wondering if there's a cap on how many times you can actually use that.
So while the Families First Coronavirus Response Act only provides 80 hours of leave towards this, we know it's absolutely essential that we support our employees. So we've been engaging with all of the surrounding jurisdictions, both school divisions and some other local governments, to see how they're doing it. But we know that we want to make sure that our employees are protected and that they feel they can stay home and not be concerned about not getting paid.
Okay, that's fantastic. Thank you, Ms. Michael. That's really reassuring to hear. And I guess, and I think you probably covered this, or maybe Ms. Sharp did, but with regard to the protocols that are being developed, if someone does get the virus, and I guess, you know, some of the questions that have come up were, you know, okay, so what if Corbin Downs, one of her boys, gets the virus? Then obviously, all the Downs boys are being quarantined. Does that mean all the teachers, all the, like, where, you know, what is the bubble for that? And I guess, again, that might be something that's further down the line, but trying to figure out, I mean, like, and then what if they rode the bus? Would it be the whole bus that had to? So trying to figure out where the, sorry, go ahead.
No, I jumped on your sentence.
No, that's okay. I could have gone on for another five minutes, so you go ahead.
It's a great, it's a great question, and it is one of those, it depends, kinds of questions, unfortunately. And there isn't one clear answer, that if one person gets it, does the whole class, or does the teacher, or does the school quarantine? That's why our relationship with the Fairfax County Health Department is so important. They have contact tracers. They have promised us that they're going to have one of the best contact tracing programs in the United States, and they've hired, I think, almost 500 people at this point to be contact tracers. But we would get in touch with them immediately, and they would tell us who has to be quarantined. Actually, it wouldn't be us. So what that means is, let's just say, unfortunately, some student gets a fever and has to go home, we let the health department know immediately, they're going to touch with the family, and they question that student, who did you sit by? That's why part of our strategy is teachers are going to have to maintain seating charts this year, so that we can go back to the seating chart and see who that student sat around. And if that student didn't have any contact, that would be considered an exposure. There may be a circumstance where nobody has to quarantine except for that one student. However, if they were in a small space for more than 15 minutes, because remember, an exposure is 15 minutes in a space with each other, there may be a circumstance where more people need to be quarantined. But it's also based on whether or not there's a positive test. So there's a lot of pieces to it, but the health department will be our guide.
Okay. And then getting back to, like I said, I had extensive conversation with one of our community members who works in pediatrics. And one of the things that she had brought to my attention, I guess, was the testing component. And I guess, first of all, it sounds like not all tests are created equal, so that, you know, is a potential issue. But also just the act of getting tested, I guess, like, they're not typically doing testing in pediatrician's offices, and then the pediatrician's offices are referring the patients to Inoba, who might, I don't know, it just sounds like the testing component is still kind of messy and not as, I guess, far along as we had all hoped going into late last spring, knowing that that was going to be a critical component of the return. So I guess that was more a comment. Sorry. And then, sorry, I dropped my guy. Can you still hear me? Okay. Sorry, I dropped in here. Okay. And so my last one was just with regard to the teachers supporting virtual Virginia. And I was just curious, like, how those teachers are going to be identified? So at the elementary level, I'm using virtual Virginia. And I guess, if there's been any thought to how those are going to be assigned, or what the thought process is there?
Yeah, we've started giving it some thought. But again, a lot of this is going to be based on the numbers. And, you know, depending on how many first grade numbers versus third grade numbers versus second grade numbers, who the best fit might be and how we can best staff that. But what we are excited about with virtual Virginia at the elementary school is that it would be one of our teachers who would work through that program to provide support and instruction to the students. And so they know our students best. They can work directly with the principal, they can work directly with the parents, which is, not that it wouldn't happen if it was another teacher that was assigned through virtual Virginia that may be off in another county or another part of the state, but we know it can be just more intimate and the relationship piece will be there. So we've talked to both Paul and Tim at the elementary schools, and they've discussed potential options as far as staffing is concerned, but we're just not there yet.
Okay, and so I guess it's a follow-on question. Was it your expectation that whoever's identified as the virtual Virginia teachers, that they're doing that remotely, or are they still expected to be in the building, like, you know, the regular teachers, or has you gotten that far, I guess?
We haven't, we haven't gotten that far, but what we do know with virtual Virginia is that there is an option, an obvious option, for students to transition back to the school and back to the classroom. And so that virtual, that FCCPS-assigned teacher to virtual Virginia has to be one of our team members, right? And so there would be an expectation that they're engaging in meetings, they're engaging in collaborative discussions, and they're meeting routinely with the other teachers in the school, whether it's in their particular grade level or at another grade level, to talk about lesson plans, to talk about making those adjustments and scaffolding and differentiation. Because again, virtual Virginia will provide the lessons, they provide the curriculum, it's all aligned to the VDOE. So that's provided to the teacher, but we know that there's things specific to our schools and specific to individual classes or individual teams that our teachers look at, that we're going to want that teacher to be able to have an opportunity to engage in those discussions. So in short, yeah, the thought would be that whether they're housed at the school in a classroom or not, that they would have, there would be an expectation that they would be at the school at some level.
Okay, great, thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Russell. Are there other questions at this point? Ms. Litten?
Thank you, Chair Anderson. First of all, I'd just like to say thank you to Dr. Noonan and all the staff. We know this is really hard, and everybody's very emotional. So just thanks for hanging in there. I know it's a long road this year. So first of all, Dr. Noonan, I think the plan to go back to the, kind of the original plan, I support that, you know, as excited, I think, as some people were about the idea of going back full-time. I think we've heard very clearly from our teachers, they don't feel comfortable. So I hope our teachers out there listening just know that we hear you. Obviously, the staff, Dr. Noonan and the staff, hear you. So I think that's a good call. I just have a couple of questions for Dr. Bates, also on kind of the virtual Virginia for elementary. And you may have said this, but I think the virtual Virginia, is it right that it provides sort of the curriculum and lessons, but it's not, like, students wouldn't be online with a cohort of other students and be able to see and interact with those students? That's not the way it works. Is that correct?
No, you're correct.
Okay. So then, the teacher from Falls Church, I mean, would that teacher ever kind of pull together a cohort of students virtually to see each other? Or is that teacher just checking in with Or is that teacher just checking in with that individual student?
So it would, so it would be a combination of both. What we would, what we would like to see happen, or what our goal is at, at a minimum, would be for the Virtual Virginia to provide synchronous instruction with math, with mathematics and language arts at a minimum, and then do asynchronous in, in the other areas. But as you had, had stated, the Virtual Virginia program provides the lessons, it provides the activities, it provides videos that students can link to that are directly connected to the learning and the curriculum standard. So students are able to go, go through and, and work through all of those different activities within the module. However, the teacher that's teaching that class or that's responsible for that, that particular group of students could actually do a synchronous lesson on this day at this time or this day at this time, and schedule students to come in and provide that synchronous, real-time mathematics lesson, reading lesson, or, or language arts lesson.
Um, because my feedback on that would just be, at least my experience with an elementary student when we did the online learning, just having the teacher gather some students and be able to say, Otto, you know, what, what was great that happened this weekend? Can you tell me about that? Like, that was probably the most valuable thing that happened this spring, just for him as an isolated student, not able to see other kids, to be able to just talk a little bit and connect with somebody. So I, I don't know, I don't know. I mean, I know if her numbers are very small in each grade, that may be hard to do. But my two cents worth would just be that something like that once in a while is valuable for, at least for my child, it was. So.
I, I appreciate that. And, and one of the things that, that we said that we are going to look at offering to the students on their not their off days, but the days that they're not in school and at home, or on those Mondays where the teachers are working remotely to do their planning and, and whatnot, is offer some FCL support or circles, things of that nature for students. And so that would be something, again, with an FCCPS-assigned teacher to the Virtual Virginia. That might be an expectation that we put in to the Virtual Virginia program that's specific to Falls Church City Public Schools, that's, that's unique to the rest of the state in that for this particular teacher, we want to make sure you've set up at least one day a week where you're pulling students together in second grade, or you're pulling together all of the, the third grade students to do an FCL lesson.
I, I do think we've got, we've got some work to do still on exactly what this is going to look like, but what Mr. Bates shared, it's sort of the rough contours of the direction we're going.
Great, thank you. And I just had one other question, and I know we, we probably don't know yet, but just had a number of community members, and in speaking to the PTA, you know, people, people being concerned about teachers being upset, and then asking, you know, how are there ways the community will be able to plug in to be helpful in some way? And I know part of the problem is, we want less people in the school at a time. So I know it's a challenge, but just, I'm just kind of voicing that, that people are saying, hey, we, we want to be, we want to do what we can to help the school system, you know? So just if we, you know, can continue to think creatively, if there's ways we can pull people in, I think, I think it would be appreciated.
Thank you for that. We, we've had a number. I met with the foundation last night. The foundation's really anxious to help in any way that they can, or continue to help, because they've been such great partners all the way through. There were two parents that connected. I had a chance to talk to last week as well, who are interested in, in helping and sort of leveraging some of the expertise in the community, and we've had a lot of parent support. And I think part of it is, and you know, having, having never been here before, part of it is, we don't know what we don't know. And so I think part of it is trying to recognize, you know, where do we have needs? And, and there are some things that we discuss that we sort of also dismiss. So one example is, we had a number of parents say, we'd love to come in and help with temperature checks, or we'd love to come in and do hand sanitizing and things like that. And I just think bringing, bringing parents onto campus, like you had indicated, Ms. Lytton, is, is problematic. And then doing things like temperature checks could be violations of student, you know, HIPAA rights and things like that, too. So there are certain things that parents can't do, unfortunately, but we are, we're definitely thinking about it. And I would say the number one thing that I would ask, well, two things I would ask of our parents. One is to work with your kids on appropriate, appropriate viral hygiene, making sure that they're wearing a mask, social distancing, not doing things in the community they shouldn't be doing, et cetera. And the other is, when we are back, if you really want to help us, every week should be Teacher Appreciation Week. So if there are ways to, you know, support our teachers for their incredible work and coming back and recognizing that they're, they're like all of us, sort of, you know, putting themselves on the line for, for their kids, I think that would be really helpful.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lytton. Are there other questions? Mr. Webb?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just kind of questions as we began to move back into the potential of in-person. Dr. Noonan, how do we see ourselves with students when they're back inside our, in the buildings of trying to ensure that they are continuously wearing masks when they're interacting? I know in the classroom aspect of it, it's going to be the easier, because they're in front of their teachers, but that interaction in changing classes and in between, how do you foresee trying to, and I, and there's not an exact science of how to do that, but how do you see making the effort to try and enforce that as much as possible? Because I ultimately know it's probably more challenging with the younger students of doing that.
Yeah. Well, I think, good question. I think first and foremost, it's, it's working with our parents to help support our kids before they even come to school on the appropriate way to wear a mask, how often to wear a mask, and the like. And, and we're actually calling them face coverings, not, not that's a big deal, but because we do want to be respectful of whatever somebody wears over their, over their face. But, but the, the second piece is really developing a culture a, around it and working with our kids right away and out of the gate, saying, you know, we all have a responsibility to make sure that we're all safe. And part of the way that we're all safe is by doing safe things and engaging in safe behavior and working with each of our students and our staff around that right from the start. And that'll be part of the education that we'll be providing before students even come to school. And then lastly, you know, making it the responsibility of everybody to hold each other accountable. It can't just be the adults holding each other accountable. It needs to be the other students holding each other accountable, too. And, and what we do know is that our, our kids already have been extraordinary. At least some of our older kids, when, when we did the, the march with our kids, everybody was wearing a mask, and it was really, or a face covering, and it was really impressive. And I know that our younger kids will as well. I will say this, though, and I, I think it's an important thing to kind of keep in the back of our heads. There are some kids that it's developmentally inappropriate for them to wear a mask, or they have a disability and they're unable to wear a mask. And so there will be some case-by-case bases where students will be asked to do something else, whether it's a face shield or a face covering of a different sort, or whatever the case may be. And we'll work with those students in a one-on-one circumstance. But our expectation is that kids, on the whole, are wearing some sort of face covering throughout the day. The other piece that I've, I've shared is that there is some guidance out there that suggests that teachers, if they are six feet away, can actually drop their masks. And kids could, too. We are not suggesting that kids drop their masks, but there may be a moment in time where a teacher is teaching a concept, and they, they're all going to have a face shield as well, an acrylic face shield, where they could drop their mask and have their face shield on, so kids can see their face and interact more appropriately that way. But in the end, Mr. Webb, it really is going to be the responsibility of everybody to hold each other accountable, and we're going to ask our teachers to help us. And I, I know that they are really interested in making sure that students are wearing masks based on the communications I've had with all of our teachers, and so we want to support that and support them.
And another question I have, as you said, the information that Arlington Health Department has provided to their folks has, can take you... I guess, and it's probably a hard question to answer, and I'm sure some parents are thinking it, because I am. Being that we're within a region that has, that's pretty similar between us, Fairfax, and, and the likes, how, I guess, the significant of difference between information to, to advise one county one direction and another county essentially just across, giving a slightly different direction? And how do we, how would you address that? Because I'm, I'm sure there are probably folks who are thinking that it's not like Arlington is fifty or a hundred miles away, and they're giving their folks one set of guidelines, and Fairfax is going a, it's slightly different, if not completely different direction.
I, I really don't know how to answer that, other than to say that we did bring it up today on the Virginia Department of Education call with the state superintendent, who said he would take it back to the Virginia Department of Health to see if there was some more common guidance that could be distributed to and across all the health districts. I haven't particularly looked at Arlington's cases per one hundred thousand, and I don't know exactly what their community transmission rates are, but I have to believe that they're probably different than what ours are in the city of Falls Church. And so when we look at the health department information from the city of Falls Church, we have very, a very low cases per one hundred thousand comparative to Arlington, I, I believe, and all, certainly to Fairfax. So I, I think part of it is looking at those data, and then also looking at community spread and community transmission.
That's my last question. Just finally, just want to, again, say to you and your team, thank you all for, I mean, the many hours that you've put into this and that you put into a, a system, to a program that's really, everyone's a rookie at this point on trying to figure out what's the best options that we have as we move forward. And I know that you all, you continue to use the, the best data provided to you all from the different experts, as well as continue to, to provide and gather information from our teachers and staff in the community to help guide the decision-making that you all have been doing and continuing to do. So I definitely want to say thank you to, for all that you are doing.
Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Are there other questions? Ms. Downs?
Thank you, Chair Anderson. And again, thank you to Dr. Noonan and, and the staff. Mr. Bates, one comment I had for you, just something to, to think about is, I think because we do such a great job in Falls Church City, that, you know, particularly the TJ community, I think, was, is not so thrilled with the Virtual Virginia curriculum. You know, we, we are in such a fantastic school system. And, you know, I think specifically, I've heard from a couple of families who have kids or family members who have health issues, and so the parents feel that they should keep their children home. But then they don't, you know, with the Virtual Virginia, you know, especially if kids are in ACE and gifted at the TJ level, there's not those resources. So it's something to answer tonight necessarily, but maybe something, you know, if we have FCCPS staff that could maybe once a week offer some additional, you know, challenging curriculum to those students, I think that would help alleviate some of those concerns of those parents. And the second thing I just wanted to throw out there is, and I guess this is for Dr. Noonan, it's more of a system-wide, but someone had suggested, is there a possibility of front-loading core classes? So that basically all of your core curriculum is done the first half of the day? And this person, and it is true, you know, we're going to have a lot of parents coming back and forth, dropping off, because we can't use the buses. And, you know, mo, especially at TJ and Mount Daniel, we don't really have great kiss-and-ride options there. And so could there be an option that parents could decide, you know, the core courses are up until lunch, and then I'm picking my kid up at lunch? Other pa, I know this adds more, a lot more details and logistical nightmares, but that was something that someone said, is, you know, would that be an option? That we could front-load the core courses and then pick our kids up at lunch? And then if kids wanted to, other families wanted to opt to stay for Encore and that sort of thing, they could?
I, you know, I, I, I think anything's possible. I think part of the reason that we don't ever front-load a grade level or anything like that is because it creates large classes for the Encore program. So if you have a hundred and fifty kids that are taking all their core in the morning, and then a hundred and twenty-five stay in the afternoon, and they, they can't all go to PE if it's their PE day. So there's, there's a lot of logistics with a master schedule at the elementary, and certainly at the high school, that would make that, make that complex. I suppose if a parent said, if we had enough parents who said, we, we only want our kids to have reading blocks and mathematics and some science and social studies, and our kids will go home at lunch, we could, we could potentially look at that, but it does add a layer of complexity. And it, and it kind of, it, you know, to be perfectly candid, it's a little bit like your first question, too, about parents who are unhappy with Virtual Virginia. I mean, one of the things that we just have to sort of try to wrap our heads around is as good as we are, we can't be everything to everybody, especially in a global pandemic. And, and we really are trying to do the best we can. Yeah, no, I know, I know, you know. I just, I, I guess I'm saying that more publicly than anything. And, and to be able to try to pull this off, and, and then to, like, nuance it and, and carve it out in certain ways, it gets more complicated. We may not be able to do it right out of the gate, but as we, as the year progresses and as we learn more about how things go, we certainly can look at how to differentiate differently and, and, and provide different options for kids as well. But I think it's going to take us some time to kind of figure out how it's all going to work.
Right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Downs. Are there any other comments or questions from anyone? I have a few things I'll say at the end, but I want to give folks an opportunity. All right. Not seeing anything. One of the advantages to coming last is many of the questions that I would have asked have already been asked and answered. And so I don't, I don't, I'm not going to do that as much. I do want to, I do want to say, I think there are some, some important messages that I think need to be heard a little bit, and you sort of made clear. One is that the plan we're talking about even now is fluid, right? It will change as conditions evolve, and those conditions are in many ways not within our control. So I think the best, the, the best we can try to do is, as, as I think you have been doing, Dr. Noonan, and, and your team, is developing a set of, of, of options, scenarios. What will we do if things happen in different ways? And I think it's quite clear that you're striving for a balance between competing factors, that in some ways, you just, they're in competition. You can't satisfy them all at the same time, and the best we can do is try to, try to somewhere in the middle. So I, I just want to say, I want to echo what folks have said. I'm, I'm very pleased with, with the effort that, that you've put into it and the thought that's gone into it, trying for a plan that maximizes our students' educational experience under a global pandemic that nobody alive has ever dealt with, something like this before, while protecting the health and safety of our teachers and our staff and our administrators and our students and our parents and our families. So, you know, that's a lot to keep in mind. On that last note, I guess I will take a second to talk to the community and just say, a reminder, we all have a role to play in figuring out how well the fall goes. The things that we do over the next six weeks are going to help determine, in some degree, what we can do in the fall. So when you go outside, please wear a mask. Please respect. Please respect the social distancing. Be careful about that. And. What we do over our coming weeks is going to really. Make a difference. And I think we need to pay attention to that. So I'm going to look for one more chance for questions. Otherwise, I do actually have a more formal statement I'm gonna, I'm gonna make as well. All right, not seeing any. Then I would just like to to make a statement on behalf of the of the school board of Foster City Public Schools. A statement of support and confidence for the work that Dr. Noonan and you and your leadership team have done for your. Thoughtful and comprehensive work in reopening our, planning to reopen our schools safely for both students and staff. We recognize that you and your leadership team have been working diligently to synthesize a tremendous amount of information. Much of which is constantly changing, much of which is unclear or in some cases contradictory to make decisions that are in the best interests of all parties. You know, we request that that you continue, that Dr. Noonan and your leadership team continue to review your information as it becomes available and make adjustments to the plan as needed. And that you continue to solicit feedback from a wide variety of sources in the school community and elsewhere. Consider that feedback. And incorporate it into the plan where appropriate. And again, just I want to personally and by by saying thank you again for all the work that. That you are doing on behalf of our families, our students, our teachers and the entire community. So, thank you. I would like to suggest at this point, we have been in a meeting for three hours that probably a five minute recess would be in order. So why don't we take five minutes and come back at ten oh five, please? All right. Thank you, everyone. We will now continue with the with the rest of the agenda. Starting from what is now item seven point oh three. The V S B A media honor roll. And I do have two. Two resolutions that I could read there, there, but I don't know if there's any, any. Doctoring any other comments to go with this, or is it just we go straight into that? I think we could, but I wanted to check. Okay, so then what I'd like to do is I do have two, two. Resolutions that I would like to to read. And then I would be seeking a motion regarding these resolutions. And we'll start with. Our Foster City Public Schools Resolution zero six dash twenty dated July fourteenth, twenty twenty. Whereas in each community, the public schools are shaped by the community to provide the most appropriate and effective. Education for the schoolchildren who attend those schools. And whereas public schools are dependent on the community's support in countless ways. Including support for setting goals for the education of our children in establishing successful volunteer and booster programs at the schools. For annual funding of operations in periodic bond elections in the election of qualified school board members. And whereas much of the community's knowledge and opinions about the public schools rely on responsible reporting by local media representatives. Who decide which news to share with the community, how much attention will be focused on various issues and what the tone of the reporting will be. Now therefore be it resolved that the board, the school board of the city of Falls Church Public Schools place the name of Nicholas Benton. Publisher and editor in chief of the Falls Church News Press. On the statewide V S B A media honor roll. Calling attention to the ongoing responsible and exemplary nature of reporting on this community's public schools. We appreciate, we express our appreciation for your balanced and accurate approach to sharing this with the community. Sharing with this community both the challenges facing our schools and the successes achieved by the teachers and students. Your work has aided this community in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools we can for the children who attend them. So that, that would be the resolution honoring Mr. Benton and the resolution. Honoring Mr. Delaney is is the same wording, except of course it would be for Mr. Delaney. And so. I think just, I will quickly, quickly say that and ask then if there's any, any comments anybody would want to make before we make a motion on this. Ms. Downs.
I'll just make a quick comment that I really do appreciate our local press and I think. Part of the reason we have such an involved community is a strong local newspaper. So thanks to Nicholas and staff.
Thank you, Ms. Downs, Mr. Brett. And I'm actually going to, going to read this other one. I think I will do that in just a second, but Mr. Brett, I saw your hand up.
All I wanted to say is that both Mr. Mr. Delaney and Nick, Nick Benton have been just. Immeasurable. In in terms of. Impact in in trying to. Help spread the word, especially back on the Friday, the thirteenth of March. When we shut down this, this, their, their support and their help in communicating. Of what we were trying to do with our school system. When we were having to shut down. That was. You can't, you can't imagine the, the, the amount of impact that had. And we really appreciate what they did for us.
Thank you, Mr. Brett. So let me just, let me just read this and then we'll seek a motion here on this one. Again, this is now Foster City Public Schools Resolution zero seven dash twenty dated July fourteenth, twenty twenty. Whereas in each community, the public schools are shaped by the community to provide the most. Appropriate and effective education for the school children who attend those schools. And whereas public schools are dependent. On the community supporting countless ways, including support and setting goals for the education of our children and establishing successful volunteer and booster programs at the schools. For funding and for annual funding of operations, excuse me, in periodic bond elections in the election of qualified school board members. And whereas much of the community's knowledge and opinions about the public schools rely on responsible reporting. By local media representatives who decide which news to share with the community, how much attention will be focused on various issues? And what the tone of the reporting will be. Now therefore be it resolved that the school board of the Foster City Public Schools places the name of Matt Delaney. News editor and reporter of the Falls Church News Press on the statewide V S B A media honor roll, calling attention to the ongoing responsible and exemplary nature of reporting on this community's public schools. And we want to express our appreciation for your balanced and accurate approach to sharing with this community both the challenges facing our schools and the successes achieved by the teachers and students. And thank you, and say that your work has aided this community in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools we can for the children who attend them. And Mr. Brett, I wanted to say thank you for your comments. It's a little bit of the behind the scenes perhaps that that people don't necessarily see and how intense that effort was and how much help that was. Maybe, maybe something that hasn't previously been known as well. So thank you for that.
Absolutely. Thank you very much, Chair Anderson.
All right. Thank you. Well, with that, I would seek a motion regarding these two resolutions. Ms. Downs.
Chair Anderson, I move that the school board approve and adopt the twenty twenty V S B A media honor roll resolutions. Zero six dash twenty and zero seven dash twenty as presented. Recognizing Nicholas Benton, publisher and editor in chief of the Falls Church News Press. And Matt Delaney, news reporter of the Falls Church News Press for their ongoing and exemplary nature of reporting. On the Foster City Public Schools to the community.
Thank you, Ms. Downs. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Litten. Ms. Goodell.
Yes, Dr. Anderson.
Yes.
Doc, Dr. Dimick.
Yeah.
Ms. Downs.
Yes.
Ms. Litten.
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger.
Yes.
Ms. Russell.
Yes.
And Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Thank you, and the motion passes.
All right. Thank you very much. We will now move on to. What is now item seven point oh four, second reading and adoption of policies. And Dr. Noonan.
Turn it right over to Ms. Minton for all things policy. Ms. Minton.
Very good. Thank you and good evening. Tonight we have second reading, first reading, and then policies to consider waiving first reading and going right to second reading and adoption. There are two policies for second reading, the first of which is policy I G A G. Teaching about drugs, alcohol, tobacco. Similar to the next policy for second reading, this is a policy that does not have a prior policy in our. Current policy manual. So this would be a brand new policy. There was only one minor change of adding a comma and adding a period. So no changes from first reading. Any questions about policy I G A G? I suspect Mr. Reitinger likes the name of it. Okay, hearing no questions. Policy I G A E. Health education and physical education policy. The only change here that I wanted to actually call your attention to, it's a strike through of the lettering of the policy. I did reach out to Ms. Ewing of the V S B A to ask why it had the two letters and she said initially the NSBA had. Put together policies in the numbering system that V S B A used was established by NSBA. And they had had a separate policy for health education and a policy for physical education. So they kept both of the. Letterings, I would suggest, and Ms. Ewing also agreed that it just makes sense to keep one of these letters. So going with I G A G, but otherwise there are no proposed changes from first reading to the second reading of policy. Any, any questions about this policy on health education and physical education?
Not seeing any.
That's all I have for second reading this evening.
All right. With that, I would seek a motion regarding second reading of these policies. Mr. Webb.
Mr. Mr. Chair, I move that the school board approve second reading and adoption of policy I G A G. Teaching about drugs, alcohol and tobacco. And I G A E, health education, physical education as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Dimick. Ms. Goodell.
Yes, Dr. Anderson.
Yes.
Dr. Dimick.
Yes.
Ms. Downs.
Yes.
Ms. Litten.
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger.
Yes.
Ms. Russell.
Yes.
And Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Thank you, and the motion passes.
Thank you very much. Moving on now to item seven point oh five. First reading of policies and. Dr. Noonan, I'm assuming this is from Ms. Minton again.
Great. The policy for first reading this evening is policy J H C F. I G B F I G A L wellness. This would replace the current policy nine point five five. And while this policy is being brought for first reading, we did discuss this policy at the June work session to make sure that it was clear. That this was something that was recommended out of the audit of our food service. You'll notice that this is going from a student wellness policy to an overall staff. And student wellness policy. And it's that the letters that represent this policy would have it housed under the student section. The personnel section and the instruction section. We added. I G A L as one of the letterings for this, since there's a number of portions in this talking about the physical education. And school right wide strategies to assess so- social emotional wellness. So we thought it should be under both instruction as well as students and personnel. Otherwise, other than a few commas, there were not any changes. Proposed from when it was presented to the school board at the work session in June. Are there questions about this wellness policy?
Dr. Dimick.
Hi, thanks. I do have some questions. I'm wondering. What, and I'm thinking of line thirty two, it's B six snacks. Snacks sold or served during the school day or in after school programs. Shall make a positive contribution to children's diet and health. Does this also include our vending machines? And I'm not sure what's in the vending machines, but. I don't associate vending machines with positive contribution to children's diet and health.
If we're selling the food during the school day, yes, it 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 should apply there. In in general, my belief is that the food in the vending machines that students have access to is healthier. But we do also have vending machines inside our teacher lounges and other areas like that. And then some vending machines that are really kind of targeted towards people that are renting our building in terms of drinks and other components.
And on timers, so that it'll keep it out of the school day and after the school day.
And can I ask, and you might not know, and I probably should have looked this up. This is. Which one is this? This is B. Eight. B. Let's see, all food and beverages sold in the school during the school day shall meet the nutrition standards outlined by USDA referred to as smart snacks. Do we, do we currently meet smart stacks? I assume we probably do, just on.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna let Kristen follow up on this, but that really relates specifically to being in direct competition with our cafeteria. And we don't want to be in competition with our cafeteria. We would rather drive students to the cafeteria for those kinds of things. So anything that we do serve that would be in considered competition with the cafeteria has to meet the USDA guideline.
Okay. Um, and I'm, I'm wondering, since we're working on this policy and adding this policy, I know that there's been interest in the. Community of having no outside food in school. So that doesn't apply to students who bring in their own lunches and snacks and whatever students bring, but parents providing. Food for class. I know there have been historically concerns about allergies. From my work on the Health and Wellness Committee, concerns about. You know, sugary snacks and treats. And I would imagine that in our current situation with pandemic, we really don't want any outside food. But I'm wondering if we want to consider adding to this policy that we're going to prohibit outside food. I think Arlington does that.
Go ahead, Tricia.
The only thing that I would say is if that is something that the board wants to add, we absolutely could add that we put some parameters on it. So no outside schools during. This, during the school day, whether for parties or other celebrations, so that we don't interfere with events like International Night or. Other activities that might have after school clubs that would have food.
Yeah. I, I, you know, if you're asking for our opinion. I I would say that there's a lot of resonance among the principals and many of the staff members that we consider. Taking this opportunity to revise the in school food. Policy and would be in great favor of limiting outside food for a number of reasons. One is obviously the allergies that you've brought up, given the current circumstances of COVID. There's a number of equity issues around it as well. Who can bring and who can't bring. And and I think that we would be in favor of eliminating outside food during the school day. But that's a, that's a board decision. So, Mr. Anderson, I would leave that to you and as the chair to sort of navigate those. Those conversations.
Yeah, I'm not honestly sure how the, to navigate them in the moment that we're in right now, but it is something we need to, need to think about.
First, first reading, so you've got some time.
Yeah, exactly.
And if I may, I did think about that in looking at the structure of this policy. I would recommend that if that's something that the board is interested in adding, that it be added under the principles. So under that section A. Since that was, that's a section that it most fits into under, under how this policy is currently structured. I'd be happy to put together some language and and propose that for second reading and the board could. Review that or strike that. And if folks have questions or concerns, they could raise those with Dr. Noonan and myself between now and second reading.
Dr. Dimick, how would that, how would that work for for you as a process? I think that that would be in keeping with how we've done many of the other policies, so.
That sounds good. May I ask one more question?
It'll strike me though, this is a, this is a good moment to be reminded that sacred cows make great hamburgers during this, this policy of food. Because that is going to be a sacred cow and we all just need to be ready for potential feedback about it.
In section I, we say teachers are encouraged to consider their position as a wellness. Role model by modeling drinking water and consuming nutritious meals and snacks. You know, I, I like the idea of that, but do, do we? Do we normally tell teachers what to eat and drink during the school day? It seems like. We, I, and we're not telling them, we're encouraging them. I just feel a little uncomfortable. Like, do we do this in other policy?
So I, we had a chance to run this policy by Mark Coffrin, who's our C T L for P E health and family life. And he said he was really grateful that this has added staff to the wellness policy, that it's not just focused on students. And he did say that he thought it would make sense. For the school staff wellness to be more visible in our buildings and to support staff with this, whether through professional development or other messaging. So I think this is something that could certainly be. So I think this is something that could certainly be added to my presentation for staff at the beginning of the school year, saying these are the policies that have changed in the past year that we certainly care deeply about all staff members and all students. And one of the things the board has done in furthering that is moving towards this wellness policy that would apply to staff as well as to students.
An example of how that could play out too is that at each year, um, I have brought dough, I, I brought dozens of donuts to the Mount Daniel staff. When they've met a particular mark on their Sunshine Committee, it was something that I had worked out with them, and it was just kind of a thing that we've done. And I think next year, if we did that again, I would bring bagels, for example, or something more healthful. So it would be a good modeling, for example, of some, some better, better food. And I, I, I actually think it's a good, a good add to the policy or a good piece to the policy.
Okay, thanks for your patience. Thanks for all my questions.
Thank you, Dr. Dimick. Are there any other questions on this, uh, on this draft policy? Ms. Litten, sorry, just caught your, just caught your hand out of the corner of my eye. Sorry for that.
Sorry, and, and it's kind of a random question. It's back up. Sorry, I'm just finding this section. I think it's B eight. The first section we were talking about, it says something about oh, the food and beverages sold. I'm just wondering if it's now I can't find it. Oh, um, C about the fundraisers and then that each school principal will track and monitor fundraises and records are kept on file in the school's main office. I mean, do they already do this? And is it realistic to think they're going to know about this policy and track anything that might be considered a fundraiser and keep a file on it?
This is actually already part of our current policy E F B. And so the principals all were informed when that policy was adopted back in October of twenty nineteen, that this is something that they should be tracking, and it is something that they maintain. One of the things, if this does go forward, um, to second reading next month, is I would recommend that we remove that section from E F B, so it's not repeated in two places with, in two different policies. But to answer your question, yes, the, the principals do currently track fundraisers at their buildings.
Okay, I just.
It was interesting, yeah.
It seems like, I don't know if it's the best use of their time, but I guess if it's part of their job, that's fine. I mean, I'm not opposed to it. It just, you know, seems like kind of bureaucratic.
It is one of the expectations of the V D O E and something they look at when they do our audit, so.
Okay, well, then I guess I have to do it. Great, thanks.
They've audited annually as part of their activity funds, and to be honest, the, the principals aren't always, aren't the ones doing it. So, for example, Najala at the middle school is doing it. And anyway, so they've got, they've got folks that are doing those.
Okay.
Mr. Reitinger.
Sorry, just briefly, uh, on the point raised by Dr. Dimick. I've got no objection to including for second reading some language on banning outside food in schools. I will confess that I'm not ready to say yay or nay to that yet. It's an issue I have not given sufficient thought to before. And I, I both understand what I expect will be the emotional reactions of some families and parents and the equity concerns and other pieces that, uh, Dr. Noonan raised. So I guess my, my request would be that, um, if we're going to include that in the policy for second reading, that some effort be made in the communications from, uh, the central office. You know, whatever announcements are going out or Dr. Noonan's weekly messages to make sure that the community knows that's under consideration so that there's a full opportunity, um, to engage in public comment and provide feedback on the approach. So people have a chance to have their say. I, I'd also be interested in hearing more detail, perhaps from the Health and Wellness Committee on the various things that we should be considered in determining what the policy ought to be on outside food.
Would be happy to do that.
Are there any other questions? First reading on this one. All right, not seeing any. Um, I would, uh, I would entertain a motion at this point. Dr. Dimick.
I move that the school board approve first reading of J H C slash G B F slash I G A L wellness as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Dimick, and thank you, Mr. Webb, for the second. I, I note one very small typo, which J H C F, um, is that, is that, just to correct that really carefully.
On the reading for the policy?
Yes. With that, um, then we've had a motion and a second. Um, are we ready to take a vote? So, um, Ms. Goodell.
Yes, uh, Dr. Anderson.
Yes.
Dr. Dimick.
Yes.
Ms. Downs.
Yes.
Ms. Litten.
Yes.
You're right, Ms. Russell.
Yes.
And Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Thank you, and the motion passes.
All right, thank you. We'll, uh, we'll now move on to seven point oh six. Waive first reading, second reading, and adoption of policies. And, um, again, Ms. Vincent.
So I'm suggesting that the board consider waiving first reading of these policies. The first three policies are ones that were updated by the V S B A. One of the benefits of moving to the V S B A policies is when the law changes, the V S B A sends updates to the policy. Sometimes those updates would require first reading and board discussion. Other times they're they're more scriveners, errors, or, um, small minor corrections that just make sure that the board's policies remain compliant with the law. So the first three of these policies are ones that we think are minor enough that would make sense changing, and the, the fourth policy is slightly different, but also is a minor change that I would suggest the board adopt tonight if the board is comfortable with it. The first two policies for this evening, A C, non-discrimination, and G B, equal employment opportunity and non-discrimination, are being changed based on a change to Virginia Code two point two thirty-nine hundred. And that, um, code section was amended to reflect the addition of protected classes. One thing that I was particularly, um, interested in and quite frankly proud to represent this board on is two of the changes recommended by the V S B A in this are recognizing gender identity and sexual orientation as protected classes. And the board had already done that back when this policy was adopted two years ago. So that change isn't one that the board needs to make now. The policy A C, the additions are noted in red on this policy, but adding pregnancy, childbirth and related medical conditions, disability and statuses, veterans as protected classes, changing the date that the policy is adopted and updating the legal reference to the new additional code section that was revised in Senate Bill eight ninety-eight this year. These are all classes that we have already protected, not discriminated against, but I think it's good to include the words within the policy. Any questions about policy A C and the proposed changes in red?
Seeing a lot of head shaking.
All right, the second policy that was changed by the Virginia Code amendments is policy G B. It adds pregnancy, childbirth, and related medical conditions, also adds creed. And then takes out the label disabled persons and calls them in persons with disabilities. And the only other change to this policy, um, it's a fair amount, number of lines that have been stricken, starting at page three. Previously, the recommendation had been that the phone number and address of the school division be included. Now what they're saying is having a universal email address to which complaints can be addressed. So we've added that at lines one seventy-seven to one eighty-two. And then there are some slight tweaks in language, then continuing on page five. Making the steps of the compliance officer a little bit more clear of what it is that they do. It doesn't change anything that we are functionally doing as far as our insurance of equal employment opportunities and non-discrimination of staff members. Any questions about policy G B?
I, I do have one. It's a very, very small question that I just want to confirm as a typo, um, because otherwise it would puzzle me as to its meaning. Uh, line one seventy-seven, the school board designates as compliance officer. Is that an, should that be A? Or is there as, and then there's a bunch of other things missing, I guess.
I think it should be designate a compliance officer responsible for identifying, preventing, and revading. So I can change that to designate A.
That, that, I just wanted to confirm. That's what I would have thought, but okay.
That's right.
Other than that, I have no comment.
Thank you for catching that. Any other questions or comments on policy G B? Seeing none. The next policy that I would suggest waiver of first reading and adoption is policy B B A. This policy is up, updating amendments by House Bill three fifty-one to Virginia Code Section twenty-two point one seventy-nine. And, um, this is saying that is within the school board's powers to, you'll see at line thirty-four, survey at least annually the superintendent for critical shortage of teachers, including school bus drivers. So this was just a minor tweak, and then there'd be a change, adding the reference to the correct code section on line forty-five, and then having the adoption date be today. Any questions about policy B B A? All right, the last policy for this evening is policy G A B I I B E A. We've been talking a lot about the audits that we go through, and the auditors, um, in looking over, um, our acceptable computer use policy has suggested that we add the line that's included on page three at lines ninety-three to ninety-seven. Saying during work hours, if an employee walks away from his or her desk, he or she is required to lock his or her computer to secure it from authorized use. Computers must be locked or turned off or protected with a screen locking mechanism controlled by password when not attended. We think it makes sense to add that, both because it's good best practices, but if we add it now, then it can be included in the policies in the handbook at the beginning of the school year rather than rolling it out. If, if we were to do first reading tonight, second reading adoption in August, then we might not have time to get this to the staff. So, um, it would just be an expectation of all staff that as they walk away from their computer, it's locked so that no one can access their email and other confidential documents that might be on there and student information that might be present. Any questions about G A B I I B E A?
Looking around the room, I'm not seeing, uh, seeing any questions. Are there any questions on this one? Seeing none, um, I would entertain a motion. Ms. Litten.
Mr. Chair, I'm at the, the school board waive first reading and move to second reading and adoption of policies A C, non-discrimination, G B, equal employment opportunity, non-discrimination, B B A, school board powers and duties, and G A B I I B E A, acceptable computer system use.
Thank you, Ms. Litten. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Dimick. Uh, Ms. Goodell.
Uh, yes, uh, Dr. Anderson.
Yes.
Dr. Dimick.
Yes.
Ms. Downs.
Yes.
Ms. Litten.
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger.
Yes.
Ms. Russell.
Yes.
And Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Thank you, and the motion passes.
All right, thank you very much. That brings us to, um, item seven point oh seven, school board meeting schedule. And, um, for this item, I am going to turn to, uh, Ms. Downs, who's been spearheading the, the work of putting together a new schedule for us for twenty twenty.
Hi, thank you so much, Chair Anderson. A quick review, uh, I had suggested, and we were meeting, um, generally two weeks in a row. And then we ended up with a gap, um, of several weeks, even sometimes a month before our next meeting, the next month. So, um, I had come to you all, uh, a couple of weeks ago with a proposed schedule. And, um, I think to make it easier on everyone, the suggestion was, could we do the second and fourth Tuesday of every month? And so the dates I circulated to everyone a couple of days ago had the dates, um, for the second and the fourth Tuesday of every month. And so I just wanted to get any feedback, if everyone looks good. I, I did have a, a comment that the meeting on December twenty-second was pretty late in the year, close to the holidays. So we could, um, instead of meeting on the twenty-second, meet the week earlier on the, uh, fif- on the fifteenth. So that's one adjustment we could make if people wanted to. Any questions or comments? Yes.
Uh, Dr. Dimick.
I would also suggest we look at November twenty-fourth, that is Thanksgiving week. And I, I know that we can change meetings when we want to with sufficient time, but, um, that is a busy weekend. I would feel very poorly if we forced all of our staff who staff us at this meeting to block that off and then in fall decided, oh, you know, we're going to move that meeting when it's too late for people to make their, um, plans to see family, so.
Thank you, Dr. Dimick. Um, I would just note that in, in past years, when, uh, the meeting has been a week of Thanksgiving, we, we have typically gone ahead and carried that meeting out on the Tuesday. It hasn't been something that's typically been a, been a change, although you're right, of course, we, we have that option if we had to, but I understand the caution that you're raising. Um, I, I wanted to just, sorry, Ms. Downs, I didn't mean to, to, to inter, you know, interject in that. Uh, other questions from folks?
You're the chair.
Yes, but you had the floor, and I jumped in there, and I apologize for that. Are there other questions? Ms. Litten.
I actually don't have a question, but just a comment. With both of those changes, it seems like if there's not a reason not to do them, then it would be fine, at least with me, fine to do them. It would make things a little bit easier both those weeks. Not to have something so close to the holidays, but.
What do other folks think about this? I'm looking for feedback. It's, uh, it's, it's late, obviously.
I mean, i- in my opinion, that's, that's fine with me. I mean, if that eases stress on, on the board members as well as Dr. Noonan and, and the staff, that's fine with me.
Ms. Downs, uh, perhaps we want to restate then what the suggestion is for those dates, right? One is to move it to the fifteenth from December twenty-second to the fifteenth, but then, um, I'm maybe not tracking on the others, the other date it would be.
Right, so we would move, um, we would delete November twenty-fourth and add November seventeenth.
All right. Are there any, uh, any other comments from anyone on this? All right, then, um, Ms. Downs, I think, um, if you, if you, I would entertain a motion if you want to make one.
Okay, I'll try. So do I need to, uh, cause the way the motion is written. So do I just add what we just talked about, the adding and those dates and the deleting of the other dates, or it says as presented, and so we're not.
Say as amended.
As amended, okay. Just that's all I have to say is as amended. Okay. All right, Chair Anderson, I move that the school board adjusts the meeting schedule through December thirtieth, twenty twenty as amended.
Thank you, Ms. Downs. Are there any, uh, is there a second? Thank you, Dr. Dimick. Uh, all right, then, Ms. Goodell.
Okay, Dr. Anderson.
Yes.
Uh, Dr. Dimick.
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Downs.
Yes.
Ms. Litten.
Yes.
You're right, Ms. Russell.
Yes.
And Mr. Webb.
Yes.
Thank you, and the motion passes.
All right, thank you very much. So that concludes our, um, business items for tonight. Next item on the agenda would be eight, uh, future agenda items. And, um, I will say, having had conversations with many of you, um, in the past days, I know that there is a desire for, um, one future agenda topic that the student engagement policy would be a part of, which is a review of our equity, uh, work in one of our upcoming work sessions. So based on the conversation, I was going to make the suggestion that we, um, schedule a, a discussion of our equity work at our September work session, and And I put that out there as a as a suggestion, but I'd just like to get some feedback on that. Ms. Downs.
I agree. I think that would be terrific to have a work session on that subject. There's also been a lot of movement out at the state level. I know the Virginia, the Secretary of Education has been on on the radio recently talking about the need to overhaul some of our curriculum. I know we've talked a lot about curriculum on this subject and changing it and making it more reflective of the real history in our country. And so I thought that was really interesting that the Secretary of Education was also taking that on for the state of Virginia. So I definitely agree that that would be a good work session. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Downs. Other other quest, other comments on the idea of a work session on our equity work, including talking about the civic engagement policy, since that would be part of it. Mr. Webb.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I am in full agreement with that. We have, we're having some level of conversation about this. Just wanted to share with my colleagues on the board and Dr. Noonan. I have been reaching out to several of the HBCUs here in Virginia, getting contact information for their education departments, as well as their career and development center. And I actually had a great conversation with the director of Norfolk State's Career Development Center this morning. And she gave some great ideas of ways to potentially engage some of the students there of about Falls Church City, giving opportunities for staff to talk about different topics with them and within their classroom environment in addition to just a traditional recruitment fair type of thing, so that they can be a little bit more engaged in in knowing a little bit more about who we are as a division. So I will be sharing that information with you, Kristin, and I have some names skipping right now, but at least definitely you two, so that you can have that. But Norfolk State, Virginia Union, and Virginia State are the schools I've reached out to. And of course, at Bluey, where I work, I'm going to try to get some contact information there also. And may even try to reach out, see if I can figure out if I have any contacts at Howard to possibly do that, just so that we can have some ways to, in our backyard, do some hopefully creative recruitment opportunities to diversify our teaching ranks and potential ways to look at some additional administrators, building a pipeline for them of students and and potential administrators coming from some of these locations. So just wanted to let you know that I'm working on that part of it. But I think the conversation that Mr. Emerson has suggested for a future work session, I'm 100% on board with.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. And thank you for that important outreach. That's that's quite quite an idea. Other comments about a work session in September on this? Okay, can I just get kind of a show of body language that says that September would be okay and then we can go on? All right. So sense of the board on that one is quite clear, Dr. Noonan. And I think we would like to schedule a work session in September to go over our equity work across the entire division.
We are excited about it. So we'd love to talk about it.
All right. Thank you very much then. And I'll just ask, are there any other future agenda items anyone would like to to suggest at this point? All right. Let's keep the dialogue going on other things then in the future. But for now, we'll move on to 9.01 and Dr. Noonan's superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chair Anderson. I think the vast majority of what I wanted to share, I was able to share in sort of the reopening update. That's been a significant focus of what we've been working on. But I did want to give a shout out and just talk about being grateful to our school affiliated organizations. They've agreed to help us with community face covering drive that will help us collect protective face coverings. We're requesting reusable fabric masks, either homemade or purchased. And we'd like each school to have a really nice sized collection, so that if somebody shows up and doesn't have one, that we can provide them one and and want to thank the SAOs for that. Each year I do a letter of gratitude to the city of Falls Church on the general government side. And I'll be sending that to Wyatt Shields tomorrow. I think I sent you a copy of that in the Friday update last week as a preview. But we are very fortunate in the city of Falls Church to have such great partners on the general government side to support the schools and just wanted to call that out. I want to just also call out, Mr. Bates has been working with his team on getting ready for the new teacher orientation, which is going to be on August 10th. We only have one meeting between now and then. And I and I just want to let our our board know and our community know that we're really excited to welcome some of our new teachers or all of our new teachers to the city of Falls Church. It's going to look and feel a little bit different than it has in the past. But we're hopeful that at some level, you'll be able to participate in some sort of hello or or something for for them as well. Want to just also give a shout out to our professional development team of Jeannie Seabridge, Julie McCrina, Rory Dipple, Jen Santiago, Seamus O'Connor, Jen Fessenden, Steve Knight, Dan Coast, and Carrie Checka. They put together, as I sort of mentioned to the board earlier tonight, a collection of professional development videos on best practices for teaching online with cameos from our extraordinary staff, some of our exemplary FCCPS online teachers. And we really felt like it was important to be able to leverage those folks that have really done a great job with the online in the in the spring. It's more than two hours of professional development that all of our professional staff will complete via our Safe Schools process. And last year, we did have many requests from our staff to deploy our Safe School training videos earlier so that they could watch them throughout the summer. And I want to congratulate our team for meeting that request of staff and getting and launching those safe schools already, so that our teachers will have a full month and a half before we return to do the Safe Schools work. And it's a good use of some of those flex days that our staff have in the summer. But that's really, that's really about it for us, other than what Kristin mentioned earlier today. Just a shout out to Katie Clinton and Brandon McLaughlin for launching daycare at TJ and at Mount Daniel. They are sort of showing us the way of how it can be done. And they have indicated, just by the way, that all of their kids, even the youngest, are having no trouble wearing a mask all day. So we're excited to continue using them as as our guides. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Noonan. Are there any questions for Dr. Noonan on his report? Thank you again, Dr. Junior, and and thank you again to all the work that that the team is doing. It's been tremendous. On this, so now we're moving to 10.01 at this point, and we'll go to board and student liaison comments. And I'll just, I'm going to go alphabetically, because otherwise I can't find everybody on my screen. And I'll just start and say, Dr. Demick, what do you have any comments to make? All right, seeing a head shake there. Then I've got Ms. Downs.
Thank you, Chair Anderson. Just a quick, I guess, reinforcement of what Ms. Litten said before. Mary Asel, who's had, who's president of the Mason PTSA, just wanted to put, and also sits on the Education Foundation Board, just wanted to put it out there again that, you know, the SAOs are ready on to standing by and to do whatever they can to help the schools and the teachers return to school safely. So that's it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you very much. Ms. Litten.
I don't have anything. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much. Mr. Reitinger.
Nothing to add tonight.
All right. Thank you very much. Ms. Russell.
Nothing in here. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much. And Mr. Webb.
Just real quick, I wanted to give a shout out to the Social Justice Club from over at MEH on putting together a very good event vigil on Friday evening. I thought it was very well done by the group. And they're pretty well attended as well for that event, first event for them. So I wanted to definitely give them a shout out for their hard work and look forward to seeing them do other big and amazing things as the group gets started. And I was unable to attend last night's Ed Foundation Board meeting, so no report from there this evening. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. All right. So all, I've got a few comments that I want to make. First one is, I just want to give an update briefly on progress toward our question about the renaming of the potential renaming of George Mason High School or Thomas Jefferson Elementary or both. Just to, I promised that I would come back to you with a with a proposed process and timeline for considering the question of whether we want to change the name of either school. And at this point, what I would like, I've talked with with many of you about it, but I just want to lay this out again and make sure that that there's consensus that this is okay to go forward. The idea would be to bring a consultant on board, and clearly we'd have to identify that group. And that's a that's a stage to come, but bring a consultant on board to help us gather public input through a process of some kind of a structured survey instrument, a period for public comment through that survey instrument, at least one kind of, one public forum of some sort. We have to work out the details of this. And then as well scholarly input, input from scholarly input from about Thomas Jefferson and George Mason as people to help us understand the broader con, broader context of their lives and themselves as people. And all of this, the idea would be to have the consultant help gather this information, not ultimately making a recommendation to the board of what we should do, but just give us this information with the goal of having all of the information to us no later than our October work session. To give time for there to be community input after school has restarted and time for us to to have time to to be thoughtful about it, but still be in a place where if there were a desire to move forward to the second, second stage and actually consider what the new name would be if we went there, then we would have time to start that process in November and and go from there. So my my question to you is, looking around the room, is that general process and timeline acceptable? And if it is, then I will go through the work and digging a little more deeply into identifying potential consultants. And ultimately, we'd have to come back and talk with the board about the actual contracts for such a group. So I'm just looking for any comments, concerns, or feedback on that. I see Mr. Webb got went off, went off mute first, and then Mr. Reitinger. I see your hand and then Ms. Downs.
I'm fine with that process. I think it's it's good beginning phase, and then we'll make sure that once we get to, October gives everyone time to get back. School starts focusing in a little bit more, get adjusted to the new norm and opportunities for them to give feedback. So I think October is a good time to, for us to get the information back. And again, I don't think we should hurry the process, but make sure that we have the the best information in front of us as we possibly can.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Mr. Reitinger.
Oh, the, thank you, Chair Anderson. The the practice and policy you've laid out makes sense to me. I just just did want to clarify, although I think this is well within what you were talking about, that when you say public input, that it's it's fairly broad stakeholder input from families, students, and teachers and staff. Because I'm interested in all three demographics. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And and I certainly intended to include all of those groups in that's in that short phrasing. So thank you. Ms. Downs.
Thank you, Chair Anderson. You know, the timeline is a little bit tight because, you know, we want to wait till school starts again. But Dr. Noonan did give us the goal of Thanksgiving. So my, I guess, just to throw this out there, if we're, I'm looking at the newly approved dates. If we're talking about, you know, October 27th, and let's say we make a decision to move forward, that gives us basically four weeks to choose a name. So I just, that seems aggressive to me, you know, before Thanksgiving, if we're going to hit that Thanksgiving deadline. But I know we're, it's a tight, I don't really have any solutions, because we're, it's just a tight timeline. Because I know we want to wait till we're back in school to get to engage everyone. So.
Thank you, Ms. Downs. Yeah, we're trying to balance the the need to have good, robust input with a desire to be responsive and also just navigating the realities of a new high school and all of the issues associated with that. I can look again. I'm not sure that I can come up with a with a different timeline that would make much sense.
Right. Or or maybe a suggestion would be, and, you know, we start doing some sort of prep work if we were to go down that route. So if we do decide to go on, we're ready to to move on that second process. You know, in terms of like a committee or something like that. We can talk about it later, but.
I see what you're saying. Yeah, okay. Are there any other, any other comments on this? All right. So I have the general sense that that I should just go ahead and continue to the next step of trying to identify some groups that could work with us. And then I will need to come back and and we'll do the process of of everything associated with the contract. But the other thing that I just wanted to to highlight is, just to let the community know that we are intending to to come back to in-person meetings again sometime, starting with our August 11th meeting. We're working on the details of what that would look like in terms of, you know, streaming and public comment and all of the other things that have to go into restarting meetings like that. But we'll we'll provide some more details as that comes along. So starting in August on that one. And then finally, the on a sort of more routine basis, I did attend a chamber board meeting this morning. And just the message I would relay is two things. You know, our business community still can use all the support that our community can give them. And also just a reminder that they've been supportive to us a lot in the past. So and then that would be pretty much the message I would I would share from that meeting. So unless there are any other comments or questions going once, going twice, we can continue onward. All right, then we will move on next to item 11.01. And I would seek a motion regarding minutes. And normal, I believe we have to do this as a vote because of the electronic meeting. So that's why I'm asking. Dr. Demick.
I moved that the school board approved the minutes of May 12, 2020, May 28, 2020, June 4, 2020, June 9, 2020, and June 16, 2020, as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Demick. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Ms. Goodell.
Mr., I'm sorry, Dr. Anderson.
Yes.
Dr. Demick.
Yes.
Ms. Downs.
Yes.
Ms. Litten.
Yes.
Mr. Reitinger.
Yes.
Ms. Russell. Ms. Russell. And Mr. Webb.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. And the motion passes. Thank you.
Yes, Dr. New.
Can can we, can I just give a shout out to Marty for getting all those minutes done? That was a lot of minutes.
Yay.
Yes, indeed.
A lot more to go. Thank you.
Thank you. I would actually just like to say a little bit of detail there. In particular, thank you for capturing the discussion on June 4th, which was, which was a tough one to capture, I know. So thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
All right. And then there are materials for board review for monthly enrollment numbers. And now I am looking around to see if there are any final comments or questions from anyone. And seeing none, we will stand adjourned. So thank you, everyone.
Thank you.